Good morning. We are going to call to order a rather strange and unusual, unique county board meeting. Before we even stand for the Declaration of Independence, I'm going to put in a request I've never done before, and that's to ask everybody in the audience to use social distancing. We were trying to figure out if there was any way we could keep this meeting to 10 people, and we cannot. It cannot be done. The best we can do is to ask everybody involved to use as much social distancing as possible, and we'll try to keep the meeting short.
Did you mean the Declaration of Independence? Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
What did I say?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Did I really say that? Wow. Did I mention this is going to be a meeting like none we've ever had before? Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, it's nice to know I've already made my mistake for the day, because I always make one. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is on the back wall. We are going to be using voice vote today rather than electronic vote. Mike claims victory for that. This is to minimize the number of clerk staff that we need to run the meeting. So for today only, we will be doing voice votes on everything. With that, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll for the Board of Equalization?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft is absent. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you. Item A is the minutes from the Board of Equalization meeting on March 10th. Item B is to call for a meeting and set... It says March 24th, but I'm changing that to April 7th. April 7th will be our next meeting date. And so on item B, we will call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, as the date for hearing uncertified assessment corrections.
Hello. Sorry.
We have motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers, for approval of A and B. Mr. Clerk, unless there's questions or comments, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. One other thing I also should mention is we do have some people that are watching this remotely. We're in an effort to keep the crowd size down in here. We are set up with other rooms out on the bridge. There, people can be watching, and we have two rooms in our office for people to be watching. If anybody that is watching wants to get word to us of anything, I'm going to ask that they call Patrick. We are down to a staff of one here for this morning's meeting, and that is Patrick. If anybody wants to get word to us on anything, please call Patrick on his cellphone to let him know. Now, having said that, any citizen comments regarding Board of Equalization?
Could I have Patrick's number?
I'm not giving it out publicly.
I will.
Yeah, if you can give it out publicly, it's that county number.
Well, then, then everybody can start calling you, and the people that are out there can't, that already have your number. I mean, the people in our office have your number. That's good enough.
Okay. So what number are the public supposed to call?
Well, this is not... This is for people standing outside the room, Jim.
Okay. What number are they supposed to call?
I don't know. But somebody out there does. And somebody in our office does. We have Resolutions D and E. No need for executive session.
Was there a... Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have motion and second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We will now convene as the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Kraft is absent. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Item one, minutes and claims. Approval of the minutes from the March 10th meeting. And again, on item B, I... Oh, we don't need to change the date on item B?
Dan Esch County Clerk, correct. There's a consent agenda item coming up, but even prior to that, at the first meeting of the year, you guys... Excuse me. The Board passes a resolution that allows the clerk to continue to make payments in case there's a cancellation of a meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. Okay. Then, is there a motion for items A and B?
Second.
Questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Real quick, Commissioner Kavanaugh, by here, do you mean yes?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor.
Questions or comments to any... We've got a lot of items on here.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clerk.
Are we adding items to consent agenda, or is that coming later?
Well, we are changing... You're right.
Correct. I'm referring to the two... Oh, I'm aware of two emergency items.
Two emergency items.
Yeah.
So we should probably be doing that now?
That's fine. You can do it at any point. Anytime you want to do it, you can do it. But certainly, you can do it now if you'd like.
I guess we're going to put them on the consent.
Well, do we have a motion on consent?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and vote on consent, and then we will vote on adding a couple of items to the agenda.
That's fine by me. Thank you.
We already have the motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and go with that for the consent agenda.
And I apologize. It was Commissioner Borgeson that made the motion, or Commissioner Boyle made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle.
Mary Ann made the motion. Mike made the second.
Okay. Thank you. Ready for me to proceed?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
I would add, at this point, we've got a couple of emergency items that... I'm not saying we're going to deal with them right now, but I would like to amend the agenda right now to add one item declaring an emergency. Declaring a local emergency. And this has an impact on OPS and some of the schools. So... And is there anything else that we should be adding to the agenda? Was there a second item?
Dan Esch County Clerk, there was an appointment to the Transit Authority Board.
That's right. Othello Meadows being appointed to the Transit Authority Board. We will not have another... And they are going to meet before we meet, so it would be nice. So I would like to add two items to our agenda. One is declaring a local emergency, and the other is making an appointment to the Metro Transit Board.
Do we need to declare the emergency first, right? So a motion to declare emergency?
To add two items to our agenda?
Yes. That's what I'm asking for at this point. And is there a second to that?
Commissioner Boyle.
All right. Could we please vote on that? This is simply on adding the two items to the agenda.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right. We will come to those a little further down on the agenda. Okay. So next, we have presentations. These are odd times, and I've asked...
Did we want to do citizens' comments first, or did you want to do present?
Fine. Fine. Okay. Before we get to the presentations, we will have citizens' comments. Does anybody wish to address this board on anything not on the agenda?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
So we have added this disaster declaration resolution to the agenda. We have not voted on it.
Correct.
Correct. And we have added, is it, Mr.?
The appointment of Othello Meadows to the Metro Transit Authority Board.
And when will those be considered by us?
A little further down on the agenda. Probably after the presentations.
Okay.
Thanks.
We are doing some... Commissioner... Mr. Clerk.
Dan Esch County Clerk, I'll be brief. There's a lot of people to thank in the community, but one person that I'd like to point out is actually a member on our Health Center Foundation Board, Dr. Ranuga Vivekanandan. She's an infectious disease doctor at CHI, whose family, by the way, came here as refugees, since we like to talk about... Or not you... Not the board, but since some citizens like to talk about refugees during citizens' comments this year. So just wanted to point out that she is doing fantastic work in the community, and I'm grateful she is here helping us out.
She's a hoot. I really like her. We're lucky to have her on our foundation board. Thank you for that, Dan. Okay. We're going to be having some presentations about what different offices, how they are responding to the current pandemic, what changes are occurring. This is their public opportunity to share with us, but even more so with the world, what changes are going on in their office right now. I have extended the invitation. I mean, we are... We have the Election Commissioner first, and then the County Treasurer, and the County Assessor and Register of Deeds. Although after that, I have also sent out to all elected officials, since we're not meeting again for a couple of weeks... Come on down, Brian. This is an opportunity, and if any other elected officials, perhaps Wayne Hudson, want to give a little brief update on what their offices are doing, I'm going to give them that opportunity as well. So, good morning, Brian. How's life out of the Election Commissioner's office?
Well, we're surviving like everybody and still smiling, so that's the good news. So... Well, good morning. I talked to the Secretary of State's office yesterday, and as of this moment, they're saying that the election will go on as planned, May 12th, with polling places. However, having said that, we are encouraging voters, please do not come to our office at this time if you don't have to. You can go on our website, and you can register to vote there, or update your voter registration there. You can go there and go to the icon that is an envelope that says "Early Voting by Mail." Click on that, and you can fill out an application and send into that. And I guess I'll take this opportunity at this time. Lancaster and Sarpy Counties, you may have seen the Sarpy one in... Or heard that they are sending an early voting request form to everybody in the county. If that is something that the county board would be willing to do, the cost of that would be no more than $100,000. The most expensive part of that is the mail, or is the postage, is by far the most expensive part of that. But we would not... We have our early voting permanent list, which we started about a year and a half ago, which was great, because we already have over 26,000 requests in, which is double what we've had the past two primaries. So we sent 40,000 cards already to those people, so we would deduct those people from this mailing, because they've already received one, and then send a request form to every other person in the county, if the Board so chooses to do that. Other than that, poll worker training, we are in uncharted territory. It takes about 1,400 poll workers, and that would be with a 200 poll worker cushion, because we don't know what's going to happen on Election Day. We don't know if poll workers are going to show up or not, quite frankly. But we obviously have canceled all of our in-person classes. We're working on some videos and a quiz online, so we're moving to an online platform. Again, we ask for patience. It's uncharted territory. We've never done this, but we need to do something. We do have about 1,000 poll workers signed up already for the classes that we have, so we will be notifying all of those that we're going to this virtual platform, and we expect more of them to sign up then at the virtual platform. But the real question then remains, obviously, is when Election Day arrives, what happens? We've expressed our concerns. Yesterday, the big three counties, Lancaster, Sarpy, and myself, had a conference call with the Secretary of State's office. We expressed a lot of our concerns to him and his office, and so he's taking it under advisement. But as of yesterday or this morning, the election is still going on as planned with polling places. But again, we're highly, highly encouraging people. The name of the game here is by mail balloting, doing your registration online. If you have problems or questions doing any of that, please call our office at 444-VOTE. We are still there. We're still working. Thank you for the new office, because we're able to spread out, which is awesome. If we were still in that old building, I don't know if we'd even be functioning right now, because we'd literally be on top of each other. And we can compartmentalize. The back work area is separate from the work area, which is separate, you know, from the training room, so that's been a real blessing. So between the permanent early voting list and the new buildings, I mean, maybe there was some foresight there on all of our part. So again, just thank the Board for that. Polling places, we have 12 polling places. In retirement communities, we're definitely moving out of those. We're in that process. We have seven OHA towers that we're in. We are in communication with their management to determine what the best option is for their residents, but again, for the voting public. But again, hopefully, things will change this morning if we can get the money freed up somehow. I know everybody's probably asking for money. But again, if the Board does see fit to move that forward, and we send that postcard, that could help, you know, in some fashion, too, there. Schools have told us that even if they are closed, that they would be open for polling places. But again, it's a staffing issue, you know? So it's a day-by-day, as you all know, an hour-by-hour, sometimes a minute-by-minute thing. So we are going on as planned until we hear differently, or if we do hear differently. We don't know. So I guess I won't take up much more time than that. I would like to say, in conclusion, that I would like to thank each and every employee at the Election Commission. Every one of them has risen to the occasion as they always do. They're a great bunch of individuals that I work with. The voters in Douglas County and the county board should be very proud of them, and we are moving forward. We're in unprecedented times. You know what? My staff has been great to... I mean, I literally sometimes tell them one thing, and we might have a meeting about poll worker training in the morning, and by afternoon, we're going to virtual reality. So everybody's been great to roll and to be flexible, so I just... I couldn't be more thankful for the staff I have. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. We have several.
Yes. Absolutely.
Beginning with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Sure.
Thank you, Brian. And we really appreciate what you and your staff are doing. I've said this before, the elections are the lifeblood and air supply of our democracy, so it's important that we have them. So thanks for staying open. I know it's a challenge for you, but you'll meet it. I think we should mail to every registered voter a vote-by-mail thing.
Request.
As the other large counties are doing. Is that correct?
That is correct. Lancaster and Sarpy are doing that.
Okay.
Well, I believe the Lancaster Board is also hearing the request this morning, but all indications from my counterpart there was that the Board was going to approve that. I'm 99% they're going to approve it, and Sarpy's already done it.
Right. And that's, you know, really heads-up planning on your part to do that. It's going to cost what it's going to cost. This crisis is going to be expensive, okay? So public safety and public health and the vote, you know, you can't put a price on those things. We need to do them. We will do them. America held an election during a civil war when millions of people were fighting each other, and so I think that we can hold elections during this crisis as well. So thanks, you know, for pointing that out to us. Would we take that measure today, then?
So...
To allow you to get the ballots out to people in time?
That I can't answer. I can tell you if there's any indication that you will do it. I will start talking to our printer today.
Sure.
We... I mean, I've mentioned it to them, and to make sure they can do it, which they can.
Yeah.
Which they can, and they're like any company. They bill us on a cycle, and we do all kinds of business with them.
Sure.
So if there's an indication... I'm not sure if the money, how that part works, but if there's an indication you'd like to do it today, I can certainly begin to move forward today.
Right. Well, we're going to be talking about money with everybody today.
Right.
So the purpose of this is to get you what you need to go forward. But aren't there statutory benchmarks for vote-by-mail?
There are. So early voting requests by mail have to be in by 6:00 PM on May 1st. So that's a bright light in this. We have time. We have plenty of time to get these out, and voters have plenty of time to get them back in, which is great. Now, ballots begin to be mailed on April 6th, but then you can still request a ballot all the way up to May 1st. So we have time. So if the Board chose to go forward with this action today, it would probably be a couple... 10 to 12 business days, a couple of weeks before voters see these in their mailbox, you know? But that would still give them about a month to return them. And the important thing to note on that is, again, please don't bring them to our office. We have drop boxes around the county.
Sure.
You can mail them. You can email them to us.
Right.
You can take a picture of them with your smartphone and email them to us. So please use a method other than coming to our office.
Right.
To do as much business as you can.
Right. What would that email address be?
It is early... Let me get the right one here. I have a form here, so let me... It is earlyvoting@voteDouglasCounty.com. And we would put that information on the postcard, and it's... All the ways to return it are right here at the top of our form as well.
So time is of the essence if you're going to meet this April 6 deadline, to get the order into your printer ASAP. Is that right?
Right. We... Yeah. We would want to act sooner rather than later on that, to give voters the optimal time to return it by May 1st.
Sure. Sure. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. And I should just say on that note real quick, I probably am going to come back with another request for a budget supplement, not near as big, and you have my word, I will be fiscally responsible, but some things we're just going to need. Like, I got the individual's name from Paul Cohen, who's sanitizing your building, and I'm in contact with him to come out to our building and sanitize it. And then when early voting does begin, which is April 13th, I'm going to see if he can come once a week, then, to sanitize the office. So there will be additional expenses, but they won't be near this large.
Right. Well, stay well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
Hi. Thank you, Brian.
Good morning.
Also, thank your workers for their due diligence during these times. So I agree that we should send the request for a ballot to all registered voters. I think that's a fantastic idea. One of the things I am concerned about of carrying on this election with polling places, if this is still going on, and I know, again, it changes daily, but thinking ahead, most of our poll workers are experienced citizens.
[laughing]
So I'm worried about that. And so the timeline, if we would have to go to an all-mail-in election excluding polling places, what would that timeline look like? Have you thought about that?
We've done some numbers. So our supplier can get us the envelopes needed to do that. They need about 12 to 15 business days to complete that order, but then we have to consolidate all of those, you know, meaning we have to stuff all the ballots in the envelopes and send it back. So we would probably need at least... We... If we were going to do an all-by-mail election, we wouldn't really want to start to do that any later than probably around the 1st of April, give or take. For sure, we would want to know that by April 6th is the first day we mail out ballots, so before that. Now, and you're probably aware of this, but it... I believe... I'm not a lawyer by any means, but I believe... That's okay. Thanks. [laughing] I believe it's state statute that says counties of our size, in the state statute, can't...
Right.
Do an all-by-mail election. Now, I don't have any idea what emergency clauses and all of those things mean. I don't know what it negates or doesn't negate.
Yeah. We would have to ask for some type of either governor...
Dispensation.
Yeah. Or legislative, but of course, they're on break right now, too. But so I just think, thinking ahead, again, to make sure that we have that plan in place in case we have to expedite it. And then the other question I have about the early voting, if you have people coming in, and we are still at this 10 or less...
Mm-hmm.
That's one thing we have to make sure we monitor.
Abide by.
Abide by. But the second thing is, is that cleaning? So after each person comes in to do that early voting, we will have to have a staff person or some person volunteer or whatever there to wipe down and clean down those surfaces when that happens. So again, those are just things to think about, but I am very, very, very concerned about carrying this on with the polling places, but whatever we can do to assist you, please call upon us.
And like I say, we've expressed... The big three had a conference call with the Secretary of State yesterday, and we expressed our concerns regarding that, too, about possibly, you know, delaying it like other states did, Kentucky did, just this morning, I see, into June. So, you know, they have... I guess the options lie with those above us, or me anyhow.
And how many polling places are in our schools?
Well, we have 222 polling places total, and in our schools, we just... OPS has 23 alone. Millard has 17. So that's about, what, 40? We probably have 50 in schools.
50. Okay. All right.
A rough estimate.
Okay. Okay. Well, again, thinking outside the box, we may partner with some restaurants so you can get takeout when you come in and
Exactly, and you know, the schools have indicated too that if they're not in session, they may be willing to open up other schools. You know, any voter that has a polling place change at this point, we plan to mail a card mid-April to a yellow postcard. Um, I guess the real concern is, um, if things change after that.
Right.
Then it becomes more difficult to notify them.
Exactly.
You know.
But we can do our part in getting the word out to request that early.
Absolutely, I think that's the avenue we're using at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Brian, first of all, I wanna thank you and your staff for what you've done as a former election commissioner in a very, very previous life, quite a few years ago. It is a real challenge to get everything all put together, you know, and you're doing a terrific job. I think if you listen to what's, think about what we've discussed here already today, I think it shows that there are a lot of questions still up in the air, and if things happen, you know, uh, that if they do get worse, which some people are predicting, then maybe what we need to do is really do the smart thing and just this time, vote by mail. You don't have to do it forever, but what I'm very concerned about is that if the situation deteriorates, uh, the president yesterday was very serious, which a lot of people were surprised about, the way he handled, no, I mean, he has a glib tongue, and I can appreciate that, uh, but he was very serious, and they said it was because he had gotten some information from, uh, uh, Great Britain about what was happening and what happened to Italy and how we're on a course, a collision course, and that it's gonna be much worse supposedly, health-wise. Um, my daughter and her family are in San Francisco and they're sheltering in place. They can't leave their home for three weeks, and it's a serious thing. Now, if that happened here, I don't think that it will necessarily, but if it does, then all bets are off. So the smart thing to do is for all of us to, this time, vote by mail. Um, and that way, if we have to close the polling places, and if you think about it, and we have to consider that, as Commissioner Borgerson said so delicately, you know, there are a lot of elderly people who work at the polling places, they're a little bit younger than me actually, but anyway, uh, but elderly people working at polling places, and plus people coming in, now just, we've all been to polling places, so picture this with people sitting at a table, somebody leaning over and talking in the lines and all the rest of it, plus the voting and all the, what do you do if someone has the disease and is a carrier and doesn't know it, goes in and votes and touches things, and then we're really asking for it. Uh, we're, what we're asking you to do is to break the law, because right now it says only more, only 10 people can be gathered. Uh, and so if we do that at a polling place, not only is it dangerous, but it's not really setting a very good example for the public, the voters and the, and also it's very dangerous. So I guess what I would say is that we need to move ahead with what you've planned and encourage people and begin a really active program of urging people to return the application to vote by mail uh, so that they can vote at home and return the ballot to us. Uh, it'll be counted and they never have to leave their home, they don't have to go into a polling place, uh, they don't have to do any of that, it'll be a lot safer, and I think in these times, we need to encourage people to do that. So I'm very much in favor of what you're doing, and I really appreciate your willingness to do this, and I think the other commissioners are all tuned in on it as well. So, uh, thanks again for all your efforts, and I appreciate very much what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. You know, and I guess we'd consult with our attorney, you might request an opinion from the Attorney General relative to the legality of what Commissioner Boyle just mentioned about basically canceling polling places. I'm not sure that there's legal authority to do that, I'd like to know if there is before we proceed down that road. We must have this election.
Yeah.
And so how we do it legally is important. You know, the crisis is a real balancing act between what we need to do for public safety and public health concerns, and I think you're doing a responsible job of that, and what we need to do to preserve our democracy. My father was in a crisis like this, in this very governmental unit, and he said, you know, we can give away our rights with a stroke of a pen, but it's very tough to get them back. And so this election is key to our democracy, and so having it is important. Canceling it is the last thing in the world that anybody should even want to contemplate. But even going to the point of closing polls, which is gonna restrict access to the ballot, could be considered voter suppression by some, is something that you better want to have a strong legal opinion from our top attorneys general and our very competent county attorney, relative to, you know, what statute says you can do that. Legislature is in recess, and so there's no new laws coming out of the legislature for the foreseeable future. So what's in the books that allows us to do that would be something that I think we will rely on you to come back to us and say, we're doing this and here's the legal authority, and of course, the county attorney as well, as the legal advisor to the board, uh, so that we know step by step that we're doing things, you know, according to the book, and not drawing outside the lines on this particular, very important, key component of our democracy.
Sure.
So do you know what authority you have?
Say, Jim, excuse me. Interrupt, we're not talking about canceling the election, I don't even want that out. We're not doing that.
Keep the meeting brief if possible.
Jim.
I'm not saying anything about that, I'm saying the legal authority for doing what you're talking about.
Jim, you just said, you used the phrase canceling the election.
You talked about closing the polling places.
Yes, let me tell you what I'm trying to get across.
Right.
Is that if this happens, it's just like, you know, who would've thought we could have the governor telling the bars to close on St. Patrick's Day? I mean, this is the holy day for us. So anyway, the deal is that that's where it would come from, and we're not gonna do this locally, but if an emergency gets to the point where we have, you know, things have really accelerated, and we have people dying and all the rest of it, hospitals are overloaded and all this, the last thing we should expect people to do is go to a polling place. So that's why it's really important that we have this, that we get people to vote by mail this time, that's all. And all these other issues are way beyond our pay grade, and someone else who's in authority will decide those things. Not us, not him, not me, not you, and not our legal counsel, but we can, I imagine what would happen if there be an emergency declaration of some sort, saying that because of this, the polling places, you know, have to vote by mail or something. But we're not gonna cancel the election, we're not gonna close the polling places, uh, so that's why we're just trying to push people to vote by mail. So I make a motion that we give him the funds that he needs to proceed with this.
I'll suck it now.
Good.
It's not on the agenda, and there are four people waiting to speak ahead of both of you.
Okay, are, any, am I, I didn't wanna say dismissed, but are there any other questions?
I was ready for my colleague to
Okay.
complete his thing, so
Well, that's what it is, I mean, we're not, we're not gonna make the, we're not gonna make that decision, Jim, it's gonna be by the governor or
I hear you, right.
perhaps even higher.
I hear you, I'm just asking for legal opinions.
So to answer your question, again, I'd wanna say I'm not a lawyer and I would have to rely on somebody else, but from what I am aware, and I'm fairly confident in saying, that the state statute currently does not allow counties of our size to conduct an all-by-mail election. Again, with emergency declarations being declared and public health officials, I know the state public health official in Ohio canceled or postponed their election, so as it stands currently, I'm fairly confident in saying the law does not allow a county of our size to do a by-mail election. But beyond that, I, you know, we're in unprecedented times and I'm not sure who has the authority or doesn't have the authority to do that, but.
Yeah, and we have legal counsel, both on the state level and the county level, that can provide us with that, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I would remind people that the top of the food chain's the Secretary of State, that's who really is overseeing.
He's the chief election officer.
Well, he still is.
But we're communicating with the, we're communicating concerns and with the Secretary of State's office.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I was going to ask the question about the funds, so we don't have that on our agenda. Would we need to, again, um, ask for an emergency item be added and that we, um, one, we have to declare another emergency, and two, then the motion would be made to give him uh, the funds of $100,000?
Correct, two separate actions.
Two separate, okay, so once everybody's done in your
Fine.
queue there, I'll make that motion.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Rogers.
Mr. Chair, Brian, I wanna pick up on that discussion, I think, I agree wholeheartedly with not canceling it, the issue with not doing it by mail, it's not like we haven't done it, but the governor just put an order down to allow us to have virtual meetings, and the law doesn't allow us to do that. So I would ask that the three counties make an ax that he exercise executive power and give us a mail election on this one time, I agree it shouldn't go, but he's already exercised it on public meetings and allowed everybody to go virtual, so I think, I would rather ask that from him to exercise the executive power through executive order to allow it to be done, yeah, at least for the primary, 'cause he's already set the stage for it for virtual meetings, and given public bodies the ability to do it through virtual meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a news release line.
Commissioner Boyle, I have your name down, did you wish to address this again?
The word getting out that we're canceling the election.
Correct.
No.
We're not doing that at all. But if there is some way, Commissioner Rogers brought up something that, you know, this may be a route for us to take, is to ask the governor to allow us to do, uh, voting by mail in Douglas County. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I guess I'd ask you to make that, that request. It'd be a lot simpler, we'd save all the money with the polling places, we wouldn't have all the people my age out there working and all that sort of stuff, and it would, it would decomplicate things quite a bit. Are you willing to do that?
Well, it's up to the governor, I mean, am I willing to ask him?
Ask the governor to, well, what Commissioner Rogers suggested?
Uh, sure, we'll send a request to the governor, yes.
Okay.
Asking if that would be a possibility.
So you're gonna send a request to the governor asking for a by-mail election in Douglas County?
Yeah.
Fine, fine.
Is it exclusive vote by mail?
Well, that's, uh, I think so, no polling places.
It's not our call to make, and I don't wanna waste too much time on making decisions for somebody else when we've got a lot of business to cover this morning.
Well, that's what Mr. Rogers brought up.
No, we can make the request, but we, I don't wanna move forward assuming that the governor's going to grant it.
Oh, I know.
So.
I don't think he will, but I think we probably, Commissioner Rogers brought up the point, and I think it's worth pursuing.
Commissioner Rogers.
Uh, it would, my reason for making it that this sentiment was like, we're hamstringing 'cause we couldn't do it.
Right.
He's already set the precedent by changing a law that you can't meet virtually, and he's done that through executive order. I don't care how we do it, I mean, you can do one site, a regional site for some people to go, but you still might have the 10-person limit, but personally, there's nothing to say, you've handled elections by mail, you just can't do it by a county of this size, eventually it will come. So this is the time then to do it, so if the board chooses to do that, that's fine, it's not like we can't do it, we just don't have the authority, and he can give the three counties the authority to do it, so I'm just chiming in with everybody's request of saying, don't cancel it, just do it by mail, we got time to prep for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson.
Well, and that was my point way back when, was that we have time to discuss and talk and figure out what avenues we would have to take if we wanted to go that route, so we have time. So for right now, I would like to make a motion that we declare an emergency for the purposes of adding $100,000 to the election commissioner's budget for sending out early request ballot to all registered voters in Douglas County.
Okay, then the motion before us is simply amending the agenda to add this item to it.
Yep.
Are you clear on the motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, to add, I probably don't have it verbatim, but add $100,000 to the election commissioner's budget, the emergency to, uh,
We're declaring the emergency first.
Emergency for that, yeah.
Yes, very good, so this is simply amending the agenda for, on this vote.
Yes.
And I would call for a vote on that if we might, Mr. Clerk.
And the motion was Commissioner Borgerson.
Commissioner Borgerson seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
Okay. Commissioner Borgerson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 to add emergency.
Motion to add the $100,000 to the election commissioners for the purpose of sending out the early voting ballot request to all registered voters in Douglas County, all vote, all citizens in Douglas County.
All voters.
Registered.
All voters.
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 Voters in Douglas County.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions or comments to the motion before us?
Is the motion to actually do?
Yes.
Okay, wait until after you've declared the emergency on, which has been, so you have two other items that have been added to the board agenda, this is the third.
Correct.
So I'd like you to do one of the other items, vote on the substance of it first, and that is the declaration of the emergency by the chairperson, and then do this one after that.
All right, then if the maker and seconder of the motion are okay, we're rescinding it for the moment, we'll come back.
You don't have to rescind it, just table it.
I'd table it.
And then take up, um,
We are, we declared the emergency first.
That's to add the item.
Okay.
Can I, can I make one clarification?
Please.
I'm Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator, so Joe Lorenz just texted me, since I have him in another office, that the election commissioner does not need the money today, as long as they have money in their budget, they're okay. Increasing the total budget will require public notice.
Uh-huh.
So I guess what that says is that you don't need to vote today to allocate the money. You can spend the money you have, you'll come back for supplemental budget at a later time
Okay.
with the assurance
Yep.
that you'll get it.
Well, well, and Mr. Cruz even said early in his presentation, if he had some feeling that we would come through with the funding, he could proceed with this, so I guess that's where we're at.
Okay.
Uh, so again, are the maker and seconders of the motion okay pulling them back in light of this?
Yep.
Very good. Okay, uh,
So we're, we don't
There you have it.
We're letting the emergency is taken off too then.
Yeah, that would be true for the, any of the other things where somebody's requesting money, unless they come to you now and say, you know, I'm out of money, which it's March, they're not out of money.
Better not.
So anybody else that comes for money now, just say, you have money in your budget, come, but we're telling you in good faith,
Very good.
come back later for supplemental.
Right.
Thank you, Patrick. Teresa, did you have something else to add?
I do not.
Okay, good.
I just have one quick final thing, we're gonna do a social media campaign for this, so if the commissioners are on social media, once we do that, if you'd like us, please on Twitter and Facebook and then retweet and repost to help us get the word out, and I wanna compliment Dan, he's always, always reposting and retweeting our information, so if you need help finding our stuff, I know Dan can help you, so thank you.
Very good, thank you, Brian. Okay, uh, next I've invited Mr. Ewing, the county treasurer, to provide an update on what his office is doing with their continuity of operations.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My chief deputy is handing you a copy of our continuity plan as well as the zone map that we will be implementing to try to make sure we balance out the workload, and I'll explain all of that in a minute. First thing I'll remind everyone is that I am not the director of the Department of Motor Vehicles. So the Millard location where we have drivers testing through today, they will close that site and move those people throughout their other locations until their super center at 168th and Dodge opens in a couple of weeks. So this won't impact anybody's ability to get a driver's license. The other thing I'll tell you is that I started this plan about three and a half weeks ago looking at what might occur across the country, and then working with my staff, my chief deputy, Tim Kavanaugh, and the other members of the senior command, we put together a plan that will close our walk-in customer service centers so that people cannot come into the office. This is not in any way a denial of service. People will be able to utilize our office through the mail, online, and also the telephone to complete a registration or to pay property tax. We also have drop boxes at three locations where they will be able to drop those payments off as well. The only thing that we'll be doing new is that we will be actually providing a way that people who are registering a vehicle for the first time in Nebraska will be able to do that through the mail by contacting us at our main number, 444-402, I'm sorry, 402-444-7103. Then we will tell them what paperwork they need so that they can mail it to the customer service center in their zone. If for some reason someone is not able to be helped by the phone, our drive-throughs will be closed to regular traffic so that we can make an appointment for that individual to come to one of our locations and get their questions answered in person at the drive-through, but not coming into the customer service centers. We will have our staff deployed at their normal locations to be able to process registrations, to process property tax payments and any other payments that we receive, and we're doing these zones so it will balance out the workload for each of those customer service centers. So that's the gist of the plan, we will continue to communicate this to the public, we will be providing the information you have in front of you on our website, on our social media sites, as well as providing it to all of the news media outlets. What I would ask you to do is become familiar with the zones, become familiar with what we're trying to do, and recognize, this is my 39th year in government, no good deed goes unpunished. So we know people are going to complain. We ask that if your constituents, which are also mine, contact you, guide them to the website, guide them to the plan that you have, you can email it to them, whatever you want to do, so they understand this is not a denial of service. This is keeping the citizens of this community safe rather than having 60 or 70, maybe 80 people in our office standing closer to each other than I am to this podium. We cannot do business as normal in this current climate and not expect people then to be infected. So that's why we started developing the plan, and that's why we're asking for your support when you do get those occasional calls.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And thank you, John, for your heads-up leadership on this. I think it's important that we all have these plans in place, and your, been working on this for weeks, shows that you have a strategic view and a good grasp on this. I was out at the West Omaha camp. I was out at the West Omaha campus yesterday, and you have a drive-through facility there.
Yes.
And maybe you've touched on this, I missed it.
I did.
How...
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what we're going to do with the drive-throughs.
Great.
We are going to close them to drive-through traffic because we don't need traffic backed up to Maple Street or 156th Street there, or out to 50th Street at our South Omaha office, or up through the grocery store parking lot at our 144th and U office. Those sites are going to be utilized for people who have questions that we couldn't answer over the telephone. That way, they always have access to us rather than making an appointment for them and their 30 cars back. So, we have to make some provision for people. We just can't help over the phone or through email.
So, your staff currently, are they being sent to work from home or...
No. We are, we're going to have to be at the offices to process the transactions. I could have my senior staff at home, but I don't believe that shows leadership for us to say, "You all go to work, and we'll sit at home, and if you need something, call us."
So, you're fully staffed?
Yes.
Today? Okay. And in your plan, which I presume the document that you gave us is portion of that, or is that the plan?
That's the plan.
Okay. And I haven't had a chance to read it, you just gave it to us. But is there anything about testing in there?
The first reminder I gave you is I am not the director of the DMV. They have all of those provisions covered. They will have the ability to get a driver's license at 56th and Ames and 108th and Maple for the next two weeks in Douglas County. Then, they will open their super center at 168th and Dodge. But that is for the State Department of Motor Vehicles, and they have that covered.
The only reason I ask is you've probably seen this in the media where different jurisdictions are setting up drive-through testing facilities. And I'm not saying that I'll come to that, but I'm seeing that around the country.
Are you talking about COVID testing or driver's license testing?
I'm sorry, I'm talking about testing provisions for...
For...
Well, to start with the staff, I suppose.
What are we testing for? Nobody knows what you're talking about, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
It's widely accepted that the testing for this virus is going to become essential to pretty much universal, everybody. We're ramping up testing production now. It's been in the media throughout this, how behind the ball we are in testing.
I'm going to cut off conversation here. This is beyond, this is outside of our lane. This is not for the treasurer to be determining who gets tested for corona...
I didn't ask him who to get tested, I just asked him...
I don't even want to talk about testing of coronavirus. We're talking about the tre...
Well, that's kind of a problem that you don't even want to talk about.
I would like to talk about the treasurer's operations and any changes he is contemplating making to his operations. That's what we're here to talk about. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for the treasurer? Sounds like a good pla... Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I really want to congratulate you, John, and Mr. Kavanaugh as well. The, it's a great plan. I'm curious why there aren't drop boxes at some of the other locations?
Because as we were doing construction at certain locations, we were able to put them in. The older facilities that were there before I got there, we have not been able to do that. We will look at if there's a possibility of being able to do that. That would take some modification from a landlord to basically cut a hole in the side of their building.
Thank you very much. Keep it up, you're doing great.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
Well, as we've talked in the past, this is an opportunity.
Absolutely.
And that is for folks to utilize our online services. And so, again, talk about the ability to get the word out of other ways to do business. And again, in this environment, it's for safety purposes, but I think we'll, we'll seize it as an opportunity to utilize those two.
I think so, and that's really how we're looking at it. It will help us figure out how we can handle that if that in fact becomes the majority of what people... I shouldn't say the majority because I believe right now the majority of people are using online and mail. And what this will do is get even more of those folks to use online, mail, and telephone.
Right.
Very simple to drop this bill in the mail, like you drop any other bill in the mail, and get it processed.
Yep, exactly.
And right now, we generally get it turned around the same day and back in the mail. So, that's what we're trying to do by spreading the work out to the other customer service centers and see if we can continue to get them in one day, processed, and out the same day. If not, it shouldn't be more than a couple days so people don't have to think this is going to take them forever to get a registration back.
Right. Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate hearing your update. Sounds like you're on top of it.
And thank you.
Next, we will be hearing from Diane Battiauto, the Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds, an update on what they are doing in response to the pandemic. Good morning, Diane.
Good morning, commissioners. There we go. Number one, I want to thank all of you for staying on top of the communication process as much as we can. We know this is a really moving target, and how we react to it, I think, is the most important thing to keep our citizens as calm as they can be. So, I want to take just a few moments to update all of you regarding the actions of the Assessor Register of Deeds office to hopefully mitigate as much as we can the spread of the coronavirus in our, in our daily life. Like my colleagues, my office also has a pandemic disease operations plan. We have had this plan in place since 2016 when the emergency operation process through the Building Commission and, and the administration asked each office to create some different plans. What we do in tornado, what we do for flood, what we do for different, different emergency situations, and one of which was pandemic. We review that periodically, and so this, this situation really was no different. My deputy Larry Miller and Brian Grimm and I have sat, along with my other management, to really to try to fine-tune and just make sure that what we have in place is what should be in place. We owe, you know, the public service to our, our community to give as best efficient and reliable recording service as well as assessment services for as long as possible. This is a moving target, so nobody really knows what as long as possible is going to be. We know the Douglas County Health Department is leading the anti-pandemic effort. We're working, everyone has been working very, very positively with them, and we are so fortunate, again, it's been said publicly, to be where we're at in our country, very, very fortunate. So, in order to provide the services during this pandemic, through, through the last four years since we've had this in plan, we have divided our two floors into six skeleton crews. Three in the recorders, three on the fourth floor in the assessment side. Each one of those emergency crews are led by a manager, is the team lead, and each one of those teams is made up of an employee from each section of duties within both offices. So, that if we have to either eliminate everyone being in the office, we feel that we, and but the, but the building is still open, therefore, we would be doing business as much as we could, that we feel we have a full-service staff in each capacity to keep those operations going. That's recording, appraisal, e-recording, et cetera, homestead, personal property. So, we can still provide, you know, as the necessary services that we leave, which we know would be limited visits to our building, but we still want to be there. Normally, these crews are, we, we have a revolving cycle year after year, and each crew is on duty or on call for a period of four months. Now, we know that, when I met with my staff and we went through the possibility of us might having to decrease our coming into the office size, one of them said, "Well, if my team's on duty right now from January through April, and we go through a month of this before the teams change, does that mean we're going to have to be the ones on call through all those weeks?" What we do is with anything, you adjust with the situation you're presented. So, if by chance that should be the situation, and it is extended, then we will start rotating those teams so we can more evenly distribute the people who need to come to the office. So, some specific examples of what we put in place starting yesterday in the Assessor Register of Deeds office. I'll start with the assessor side up on fourth floor. We have suspended all appraisal fieldwork. No one will be going out doing reappraisals out in the field. The managers are responsible for making sure. There's a lot of work that they will be able to do in the office. It's on a limited basis. We can do ma, we can do property maintenance. We have a, a process called pictometry that they can, they can do some quality and condition adjustments. So, we'll keep them busy for as long as we're going to be keeping them at work. But we feel that was the, the number one thing to do. Secondly, well, we are in a little bit of luck in this, in the timing, if you can call any of this luck, is that we have finished our preliminary meeting process. That ended the first of March. So, we do not have the numbers of public coming into our office like we did a couple weeks ago. So, if there's, if there's anything a golden, a golden light, that, that is the golden light because we were able to service and, and have our personal one-on-one meetings with, with a multitude of property owners, and we're done with that. But we are in the middle, the beginning of a huge, high, huge process of homestead exemptions, which go from now until June 30th, and also the applications for business personal property. Each of those, personal property goes till May 1st. Homestead exemptions go till June 30th. So, to, to practice social distancing and protect not only my staff of being in harm's way or the public who may come to our office, we have suspended all walk-in traffic on fourth floor. The reason is, all of our homestead exemption applications are in the experience cycle of their life. I like to call it, when I turn 60, I'm in my third trimester. So, so, yeah, and now I'm well on my way. I'm in the middle of my third trimester, so, so anyway. But we realize that the most vulnerable are the ones who are utilizing our services at this time of year. We definitely don't want to make that any more harmful than possible. So, we have suspended all walk-in traffic. We will assure, and we give a lot of homestead assistance. People come in, my staff that so love to help, help them fill out their applications. We do all the processing of it, goes to the state at, at the middle of the summer. So, we're, we're used to working one-on-one with those senior citizens. We also offer, we partner with volunteers for assisting seniors every homestead season, and we help, we go to probably 24, I think, different help sites throughout the county, usually once a week, sometimes twice a week between the late March and the end of June. We have worked with VAS and partnered. We have canceled those, I think, eight of those help sites between... This Thursday is the first one that we will not be having, and I think it goes through the middle, the third week in April. At that point in time, we will review the situation and hopefully be able to reopen those opportunities for the community to come elsewhere than just downtown. One of the criteria, of course, is the volunteers assisting senior group. They are all volunteers. So, they have to watch out for the protection and the safety of their volunteers as well. They have, all the appointments go through their, their organization. So, they have taken it upon themselves to help us with... They're calling all of those homesteaders who have already made appointments at those sites between now and the middle of April, and they're try, they're rescheduling them into some later toward June. So, the ones that have already made their appointments, hopefully, they'll, they can be fit in and not, you know, not be overly concerned. But what we do want to do, and one of the reasons I wanted to come here today is because I want to share it with the public, is that we will, even though we're in a dire situation, a very volatile situation, this too shall pass. We will get through this, and we will resume business as usual. Also, we will have their applications processed by the statutory time at the end of June. If we have to work extra, whatever we have to do, you do what you have to do in, in situations like this. We have posted all this inform, we did a media release yesterday. We have posted on, on both websites, the Assessor and the Register of Deeds website, our plans. We have put in on our recording process landmark on our website for people who search our records. All of our records in the Register of Deeds are able to be searched online. We did put the information on there too with this, with the, the information that we will, we will pull up our bootstraps and do what we have to do once we're past this. So, that's all it is for fourth floor. Now, we're down on harney level to the Register of Deeds, and we get, we get walk-in recordings, we get people wanting copies of deeds. We also have a public area that people can come in and search and search our, our historical books if they don't have a computer or whatever at home. But we're just as concerned on this, on this level as well about having too many people and, and be, putting people in harm's way. So, in the Register of Deeds side, we have completely closed, as of today, the public area. Because all of this is available online, we don't feel that it's restrictive to the majority of people. We get, since we become online, we get very little public traffic in our public area. So, they have really taken advantage and grasped the opportunities that we have to, to sit in their living room or whatever and get the information they need. Same with recordings. We have the ability for electronic recordings. People can, partner with one of our e-recording vendors, and during this time, even though they may not be e-recording currently, we have put on our website the numbers to call to those vendors that they could get them set up if they need to record. The unfortunate thing about the Register of Deeds and the official records is that most of these are time-sensitive. When you have had a closing, you've had a refi, you've had something, those documents do need to get on record for the chain of time raised to record to get onto the official records. So, we have put that information on our website as well, telling them that if they're not currently e-recording, and need to, they certainly can by calling our vendor. They're the middleman. We don't do anything with those, those app, those subscriptions or that, that ability for the private sector or businesses to e-record. It has come to us through our portal. So, we feel like we, you know, we've reached out to them in case they need to file, and we might not be there. We've also, we're limiting the walk-in traffic for recording or information into the Register of Deeds to two members of the public at a time. And so, we have chairs out in the hall, similar to the county clerk-ish, and we will be monitoring that flow of traffic. Ironically, when we went to our new recording system, one of the mandates we have because the process at which we record now is full service. So, instead of three cashiers, we have nine full-service recorders. One of the things we had to do is reconstruct the office to handle the security of having nine full-service recorders. They handled, they handle revenue, sometimes to a large degree. They do credit card processing. So, in the midst of reconstructing our office, we had no idea we would be making it better in situations like this. But we thank ourselves now for having the foresight to, to realign our office like we did. When people are waiting in the chairs in our office on a regular basis, they're probably 12 feet from our staff, from the counters. When they come up to the counter, when it's their turn, when their number is called, we have the full glass enclosure, so, almost like the sneeze guards. And so, we feel like, to an extent, we have taken those efforts to become a little bit more physically protected as far as the issue we're in now, but we still want to make sure that we're on top of being very proactive in what we're doing otherwise. So, those are the two things that we have in the Register of Deeds office as well. I just want to touch a little bit about, back to our pandemic plan and our, our teams. Right now, we're in a situation, the building is open. It's pretty much business as usual with, within the parameters I just gave you, with the exception of the parameters I just gave you. But right now, we're still, I'm still full staff downstairs. We do not meet that 10 limit, but we are all sufficiently spaced, at least six feet from each other when we work. So, and on fourth floor, we have taken pains to know how to structure alternating staff if we need to. If the building closes, it's a moot point. But I do have in place two of the critical sections in our office. One is electronic recording for official documents. The other is the online ability to file your personal property tax applications. Statutory, in Lincoln, there is no ability right now to electronically file your homestead, which is very unfortunate. We've been trying, we've been talking for several years to Lincoln about, can we get this done? For us, in the largest county, it would greatly diminish our beat-the-feet craziness that our staff goes through during this time. But right now, they cannot, they cannot file their homestead online, but they can file their business personal property. So, I have elected with dot com. I've identified my, my personal property manager and her assistant, and my two managers downstairs. and my two managers downstairs to have the VPN capability that if the building does close and nobody can get to work, we don't know what's happening across the country where we get all of our recordings and not so much our personal property, because that's segregated to Douglas County. But we don't know who's closed and who's open. So at least we'll be able to stay on top of all of our electronic filings so that when we do come back, we will only have the mail, what's coming in in the mail to worry about. So I feel like we've really taken steps to do the best we can do in severe times. So I guess that's about it. That's about it.
Thank you, Diane. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Diane. Just one question back on the homestead exemption. So you said that you would work diligently as possible to get those in by the June 30th, but just say, again, you know, we kind of have a lull, and then all of a sudden we spike again, and we have to come back to this kind of environment, and we aren't going to make that deadline. Do you know or have a process where we can ask again for that deadline to be?
Extended.
Extended?
Well, we do have like, June 30th is basically the deadline. We do have till, I think, July 20th. So we have, what we do, because invariably, we get a good, good number of applications mailed in on the 30th.
Right at the end.
So they give you a grace period to process those, I guess, to take a step at a time. And I do have a call-in to Ruth Sorenson at Property Assessment Division. I would like to have a conversation with her, similar to what Commissioner Cruz just talked, an exception to do something maybe out of statute. That would take, though, a decision from the governor, I'm sure. But those conversations need to be had because you're absolutely right. Today, we do not know where we're going to stand the next hour. So to know where we're going to stand in June and July is really, there is no crystal ball to know that. So we are monitoring all of this daily, just as you are, and responding accordingly. We might even be able to, depending on the severity, we might be able to have those skeleton crews in the office, depending on what's closed and what isn't, to at least handle the mail, you know, the mail and what we're able to handle. What we don't want to do, because we do serve the vulnerable group of people, we don't want to have that one-on-one connection. Up in our office, we have signs on all of our doors stating what I just told you today. If they have their packets with them and they're done, they can drop them off at our front counter, and we'll make sure we have their contact information, that there again is through the glass window, and we will, those, if they're complete, we will be able to process whatever we can. So this is just if nobody has it ready. If they're wanting to have a conversation with their homestead exemption staff member, they won't be able to do that at this time.
But they can mail them in too.
Absolutely.
And then if there's questions, the staff can call them.
Yes, they can mail them in.
And help them out that way.
Are they able to email them? They can email them, and what do they email them to, Michelle? So if they have, that's if they have all of their packet prepared. We review those packets, my homestead staff. If there's, this is on a regular basis. If there's anything in them that we need more information on, we contact them, we'll send them a letter, we'll call them. So the fact that if they're not completely correct or complete, we deal with that all the time. So yes, they can mail them in, they can email them to homestead@DouglasCounty-ne.gov, and we will get that. So we have, you know, a couple options for them to still get theirs in and not worry. What we don't want them to do, the elderly, we don't want them to panic that they're not going to be, have that possible tax relief. Because we will do what we have to do once this passes, and even while we're still in it, to get as much process as we can.
Right, exactly. And then lastly, if there's anything the board can do in terms of legislation to get that electronically filed provision, let us know because I think that's a great idea.
It's sort of a mushroom, a chain events of effect also, because if they extend the period of which we have to process, then they will extend the period of which we have to report, which will extend the period for the state to process the reimbursements, you know, so it will be a chain reaction. But it's something that needs to be addressed. Hopefully, we don't go through this, just like the flood. Hopefully, we won't go through this except once every hundred years, you know, but nobody has that crystal ball. So the more we do now to be proactive and plan, the easier, if by unfortunate chance we go through it again, the easier and the more prepared we will be then.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Diane, just real quick, kudos to you and your staff for having this plan in place. That's a sign of a really heads-up executive and administrator. So thanks very much, and echoing sentiments, if you need anything from us, please let us know.
Definitely.
Doing a great job. Thanks.
And if we do, you know, possibly go to the legislature even past this time to put some type of, I don't think it hurts in a multitude of reasons, to have some type of ancillary emergency legislation, you know, something that if this happens, we can do this. If this doesn't happen, we don't do this, you know. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Diane. Appreciate it. We have several more elected officials and department heads that I'm hoping to hear from this morning. Tom, are you ready? Why don't we go with you next, if we may? I don't see Captain Hudson.
Good morning. Tom Riley, Douglas County Public Defender. Sure.
The attorney is saying, since this isn't on the agenda, how are we handling this? And in my mind, because we're not taking action and we are under an emergency, I think getting reports, but Teresa, what would you suggest? How should we proceed to hear from?
Teresa, here at County Attorney's Office, I think you can add it, Commissioner. So here's my thoughts. You can either have any elected official you'd like or any person speak under Citizen Comments. The restriction on the board is you will not be able to engage in a dialogue with that person, and I believe the board would like to do that. So you can also vote to add it as an emergency item, and then it is an item that you can discuss and do whatever pleases you.
All right, well.
To add an emergency item to hear from all other elected officials and department heads?
Well, but this way we can. This way we can. So everybody should be happy. So, okay. Diane, are you clear on that motion?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote on that, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah, okay. All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just yes.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
The other elected officials and department heads of Douglas County to appear before the board and give us their take on the COVID-19 situation for their offices.
And I will second that, and ask for a vote on that one then too, please.
Okay. Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
To add this to the agenda so that we can engage them in discussion.
I think we should treat all of them equally.
So that's, okay. Yes or no? Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption, Tom. You know, lawyers, excuse me, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Try to keep.
Okay. First of all, what you need to know is that the Public Defender's Office is a reactive entity. We don't have a lot of power. We react to what is going on. Secondly, law enforcement officers, the jail, and our staff are the people who are going to come into contact with the arrestees most frequently. They're not going to shut down the police department or the sheriff's office. I don't know what they're going to do with the courts. That's a very fluid situation. And obviously, if arrests are made and people are put in jail, there has to be bond hearings, whether the courts are closed or not. Or else we're going to have 2,000 people in the county jail in a month, and we can't tolerate that. Don Klein, my friend from the County Attorney's Office, he also is in a situation where if there are arrests are made, he has to make decisions to file or not file, and he can't just say, well, we're in an emergency, so I'm not going to file this burglary charge even though they've got the goods, so to speak. So we're all in kind of a situation where we're prisoners of our own system, so to speak. We have two kinds of clients, basically. We have ones that are out on bond or that receive citations, and people who are booked into the jail after their arrest. What we're doing with the people who are given citations, typically what happens is they have a mass arraignment in county court, because they're all going to be misdemeanors. They ain't following the 10-person rule or the six-foot rule. They have mass arraignments at nine o'clock every morning. Whether that's wise or not, I'll let the judges decide. I've got my own opinion, and you can probably figure out what that is. I think they should stagger them, but I can't control that. Once the court determines that the person is unable to hire private counsel, they give them a slip and send them down to our office where we give them a form to fill out so we can contact them. They fill the form out, which is basically name, rank, serial number, and then they go home, and we send them a letter saying, here's your next appointment to come in, and here's who your attorney is going to be. We don't assign it right then at that moment. There are, last year, there were over 10,000 misdemeanors that were assigned to us. So you can imagine the daily traffic that we have. I don't see any way that we can avoid that contact with our staff to, it's a brief encounter. Basically, what they come in, we have the forms and we have pens for them to use, and that's an issue too. And we have them fill the form out, bring it in, and they go home, and then they're contacted for appointments. I told the staff yesterday that I've been informed by law enforcement that when they give a ticket, typically what they're doing is saying, you have to appear in court for your arraignment 30 days down the road. They're talking about kicking it to 60 or 90 days down the road, which I suppose, to some degree, will lighten the load in the short term, but it's still going to all come, the same numbers are going to be there, whether it's 60 or 90 days down the road. I think everyone's hoping that this will, as, well, I'm not going to quote anyone that magically go away, but it's not. So that's one thing. And we can control, I think most of the judges and prosecutors, if someone's out on bond and we don't have any real rush, or if they're on a misdemeanor, we don't have any real rush to get to court, I think the prosecutors and the judges, for the most part, will say, okay, we can push these down the road a little bit because people who are out on bond are still able to go to work, they can still see their loved ones, and it's not as urgent to get into court. On the other hand, and then Mr. Myers, I'm sure can fill you in better than I, but he is kind enough to send me a jail census every day, and I think this morning there were 1,265 people in jail, basically 1,000 of whom are pre-trail detainees. Okay? What can we do about those people? All right. As you know, every day, 365 days a year, I've told you this before, I think, our office interviews all the felony detainees that were arrested the night before. We do that remotely. We have three laptops that we can remote into the jail that we worked out with county jail, that allows us to interview the clients for their upcoming bond setting. So Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, every day, they're interviewed. Then they have to go to court because they have to have a bond setting hearing. If we don't have a bond setting hearing, they're just going to sit there. And maybe there's ways that we can do that remotely. We're looking into that. I know the courts are talking about WebEx or something along those lines that they might try out. And those things probably can work on non-contested hearings. But when it comes to contested hearings, it becomes a bit of a problem because if the lawyers and the judge are in the courtroom and the defendant is in the jail in a remote area, and the defendant wants to ask his lawyer some questions, there's no way to have a confidential conversation with him. Okay, everyone, leave the courtroom for a few minutes so we can talk to the defendant. So we have to, going to have to think of some ways to handle that. More importantly, we can't move the cases if we don't have conversations and discussions between the lawyer and the client. In normal days, we go over to the jail, we sit in a room with them, we go through the discovery, which is police reports, and now, in many cases, that are the serious cases anyway, they record, video record, all of the interviews. So we have to send our investigators over to the jail with laptops to let the defendant sit there and watch the interviews of the witnesses against them. They have absolutely a right to do that before they decide if they're going to plead guilty or go to trial. Many of these, and Don can tell you the same thing, many of these interviews last four, five, six, seven hours. So our investigators are sitting over there with the clients for very, very long periods of time. They don't do it all in one day. They'll say, okay, we'll do an hour and a half or two hours today, and we'll do two hours on Thursday, and a couple hours. So that's how it normally works. And then, of course, the lawyers have to go over and talk to the clients and explain what their rights are and what's going to happen. Right now, and Mike Myers has been great with us, and he has suspended face-to-face interviews with the clients. I do not have any argument with him about that. Obviously, the jail is a situation where if the infection happens, talk about six feet and 10 people, I mean, that ain't happening in the jail. So if someone gets sick over there, the likelihood is that we're going to have a real significant situation over there, to say nothing of the exposure that our people have, and then they bring it home to their grandma, grandpa, or to me. I'm in that age group now too, Mike. So what we've done, and this is with, we've had lots of coordination over the last couple of weeks. We, with dot com and the jail and myself, we've decided that the best thing we can do is purchase tablets that will have an app on them that we can, our lawyers can remote into the tablet at the jail to interview the defendants at the jail. Three laptops with 55 lawyers isn't going to cut it. So I'm asking, I'm going to be asking, or actually, I'm buying a tablet for each lawyer, each investigator, and a couple of our support staff who do the translation. We have Spanish speakers that, when we have Spanish-speaking clients, that do the translation. It's about 65 thou, and I did the same thing. I spoke with, by putting an item on the agenda, and Joe calls and said, look, just what Patrick said earlier, you got the money in your budget right now. I know you might not have enough as it goes on, but this thing could go on for four, five, six months, seven months, and we can't just have everything grind to a halt and a stop. So to me, this is the way it's going to happen. The other thing is, what if we have to quarantine some of our lawyers? Well, if they have these tablets, they can be at home, and they can still remote into the jail to interview their clients, and those of us who are not quarantined at work can move the cases along. So I think these things, while it's, you know, 65 grand is not a drop in the bucket, I understand it, but I think the alternative is having people staying in the jail much, much longer because of the limited amount of access we'll have to the client. And I know Mike will be speaking with you shortly, and he has worked with dot com, so we're hoping we can get, we're going to get tablets that are compatible with each other to make, we have the same stuff on them. I spoke to dot com yesterday, and they said, I mean, we did the RFPs and all that, and got the bids, and we have been assured that, but I think I placed the order yesterday, and they said that they could get it to us in two days, because I said, if this is going to take us six months, not worth it. take us six months, I'm not worth it. But they said they'd get it in two days and Dotcom said that they thought they could get the things loaded up so we can remote into our desktop from home, remote into the jail from home or from the office within a week to 10 days. Now, maybe that's a little optimistic and I, I don't know what, I, I don't know what Mike's been told about the likelihood of that. But that, that's basically what I wanted to come here and tell you that that, to me, right now, the courts are open, so that means every district judge and every county court judge is doing things their way. And that, they're not uniform. And I can't control that, Don can't control that, Mike can't control that. And actually, I don't think the presiding judges can control it because they're all peers and the presiding judge can say, do it this way. And, you know, the other judge says, well, I'm do, I've been doing it this way for 15 years and I'm just gonna keep doing it my way. I suppose the chief justice could impose some requirements or make some, enter some orders, but I, you know, like I say, I don't know, I don't have a, a direct pipeline to the chief. I'm sure he's trying to figure out what's the best way to go. And of course, he has, he has to consider, you know, the less populous counties as well as Douglas County. And to have a uniform, one of the problems we've always had is one side doesn't fit all, sorry. We, and of all people that know that, you guys do. And we're, we are, whether anyone like to admit it or not, we're, we're the biggest county and we're, we're unique up here. We have the biggest numbers by far and we're gonna, one they're gonna have to deal with this. So I don't have any plan on sending people home unless they're sick. I'm not, I don't have a plan of, right now, I have a secondary plan of doing some shifts on some of the support staff if need be, like some of the data entry folks maybe don't have to be here from eight to four, or eight to five. They could work maybe three to 10 or something. I don't wanna do that to people, but if need be, we can do that on, on the data entry. They don't deal with the public or the clients. They're putting in information. That's a small number for us, so it wasn't gonna make that much of a difference. We, as those of you who've been down to my office or our public defender's office know that we do have, the, the six-foot rule ain't exactly in compliance. We have a lot of cubicles where we have multiple people sitting close to each other. I'm gonna have to definitely address that. Most of them are part-time employees that are copy clerks and things along that, high school kids, college kids. And what I'm gonna have to do, and I go, I'll talk to the office manager today, is we'll stagger them. We'll have, okay, some of them will work Monday, Wednesday and Friday, some will work Tuesday and Thursday, and then the next week, they'll have the Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Tuesday, Thursday. That, that's, I think, the best I can do as far as the lawyers go. Right now, they are, they all have their own office, they can shut the door, and they have control over people coming in from the public. As I said, I told them, call your appointments and, and tell them, let's wait a couple of weeks if you're out on bond. The people in jail, we can't really do that. And that's why it's critical that we get these tablets and get them to Mike and then we can, we can move the cases along. There's still gonna be problems. I can't sit there with a tablet and, our investigator can't sit with a tablet and say, okay, I'm gonna hold this up to the screen, here's a four-hour video of your witness who claims they saw you do the shooting. We're still gonna have to figure some ways out. And Mike said, obviously, on a case-by-case basis, if we have to do face-to-face, we'll do it. There are a few interview rooms where there's a glass between the two, the inmate and, and the lawyer. It's not ideal. You can, you can see through it and I, I just, you know, you kinda have to yell a little bit, but we can turn the volume up. It's not ideal, but it, it's what we can do right now. We have to put our, put our heads together and think of other possible ways that we can get this information to the clients that need it. Because the ones that are sitting over there on robberies, sexual assaults, homicides, drive-by shootings, those cases are the most likely ones to go to trial. They're the most likely ones that are gonna be sitting in the jail for an extended period of time to go through the discovery, to make their decision, am I going to ask to plead guilty or am I going to go to trial? So while they're a minority of the number of people, they're the ones that are there the longest. I mean, you know, murder cases usually it's, they're sitting there a year before it goes to trial, if they're going to trial. If they, if there's a plea agreement of some type, obviously it can happen shorter, but it rarely happens in less than six months, wouldn't you say, Don? So that, that, that's kind of what we're doing and where we're at. And I don't wanna say our hands are tied, but we're probably one-armed when it comes to control over things.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate that. We have a number of questions for you. Commissioner Rogers.
Tom, thanks for the update, but mine would be a little quicker then because you alluded to some things, but the one thing that you pointed out with some of this contact, and I think you alluded to the case-by-case piece, and I know that corrections are making some is that, I think the public needs to know too, and Dr. Poor stated, she'll probably re-stated tomorrow, is that I think each person's gonna have to be evaluated on what their condition is. And it's not the fact of, I mean, the social distancing is important, but I think there's a certain amount of closeness you can have if you take the washing hands precautions, the other things. And I think the public needs to know too that it's not, the exposure's not just being close to somebody, it's being close to somebody for at least 10 minutes. So I think there's a way to get around that by just understanding fund, some of the fundamentals and going. Some of the other things you stated, I mean, I think obviously we gotta adhere to the six-feet, three-feet rule in contained environments, but I think everybody just needs to understand that the fundamental is that it's, the 10-number rule has been enforced down, one-on-one, take the precautions of wiping things down, the computers, the rooms, other things like that. And it, and it hopefully doesn't impede on any, any rights that's going on. So I just wanted to note that, that for the public, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Boyle.
Tom, I wanted to ask you about, you mentioned office space. I know I've been on the building commission too and of course Commissioner Duda as well, but we need to talk to you a little bit more about that. I know you've talked to Paul Cohen, but if, I don't know how, I know that's really an urgent matter too, but not necessarily to be discussed today, but I just wanna, you mentioned it briefly and I want you to know that it's on the radar, so we're, we're not forgetting you. The, what you're doing is really, really great, really, and I know, I'm sure we'll hear the same from all the people, but I've been very impressed this morning with the activity that everybody's taking on. When you, if you, and I know how difficult it is to, I'm not on a first-name basis with the chief justice, but at the same time, I think if there's anything I can do to help, I have, he has called occasionally about some things and I've talked to him, but not about what you just brought up about the, maybe some sort of uniformity, if that's even possible, to impose on judges. I mean, I know that, what that's all about, but if there's anything that, you know, we can do to try to do that, to help, I'd certainly be interested because it's just, you've got enough things going on without having to deal with that. So I just wanna say that.
Yeah, well, I mean, no, no doubt. I mean, when you have different rules in different courtrooms, it makes it more difficult. Some judges are really easy to work with, others are more difficult. I mean, I'm not naming names, I'm not that stupid, but.
It's just like me, I'm the easiest commissioner.
It's just what it is, you know?
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom, great job.
I, I don't envy you right now, it's, it's really difficult. Just a couple of things. I know that you've classified the population that you deal with, your clients, as people who are in jail, people who are out of jail. People who are out of jail would be sometimes maybe subject to the waiver of a speedy trial rule, and I know this has been on your agenda, without further incarcerating them. And that might be some way to limit the traffic through the courts. The remote conferencing, I think, is really heads-up and kudos. You have our, I think, complete backing on purchasing whatever you need to purchase to implement that as quickly as possible. The correction center is like a cruise ship and these cruise ships around the world have been incredible hotspots.
I don't think too many of the inmates would agree.
Yeah, well, what I mean is.
No offense, Mike.
That cruise ships, once they're infected, become hotspots and the correction center shares that, along with our other captive populations at the youth center and the health center. So limiting people going in and out and testing are key to the, and, and I, I think that the quicker that we can get this limit on your people going in there and coming back out, the better we are. And then testing, of course, needs to follow on that. The chief justice has indicated that he's more than willing to talk to you and county attorney Klein and Mike Myers together to see if we can alleviate some of the court problems that you pointed out. He does have some control and power over that and he would entertain a conversation with you guys immediately. So I, I think that that might be something that you wanna pursue to see if we can alleviate the congestion that we experience in our, in our courts. The, you know, plan that you have going forward is a good one and I, I think that the time will tell relative to your staff. You've heard from the other elected officials here that they're down-staffing as much as they can and I think that once you have the capacity to do that, that's probably something that you'll entertain as well. For now, the courts are operating on different, different systems. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
No, what I'm saying is different, let's say, the district court judges, they, they like to have what they call pre-trial conferences, okay? And basically with a pre-trial conference, the purpose of it is twofold. One, to get the lawyers together and see if there's some, some agreement that can be made. And secondly, to set a trial date or set hearing dates down the road a piece. Some judges require the defendant to be present, some judges don't require the defendant to be present. The ones who, who don't require the ju, defendant to be present, it changes from time to time. Well, okay, if you're in jail, I want them here. If they're out on bond and, you know, you've been in contact with them, they don't have to be here unless they're gonna plead guilty. Some judges say, I want them here, I don't care either way. So what I'm saying is things like that where, which impact the sheriff's office for transportation. I mean, honestly, a lot of times, they'll have a pre-trial conference two weeks after the case is bound, bound over to district quarter, or three weeks. Discovery hasn't been completed yet, so we go to the pre-trial conferences, the incarcerated client is sitting up on the sixth floor in the holding cell and nothing can get done. But the judges, a lot of the judges insist on having these pre-trial conferences. You know, do I think they're fruitful, marginally? And it, you know, it, it does, it forces the jail to get the person ready to be brought over, then they have to, they're taking their temperature and, you know, sometimes what's gonna happen is, we're gonna be going up to court at nine o'clock and Mike's people are taking their temperature, they got a 101 temperature, they ain't coming, and we're gonna have to be scrambling. We've, we've agreed, Mike has told me that, what, I said, what are you, what are you doing, an hour before court?
After they're leaving.
After, okay, after they're leaving. So there's not much time. He said, if, as soon as they find out they're not bringing someone over because they're symptomatic, he's gonna email me and then I'll try to get word to the court and to our lawyers. But these are the kind of things that are logistical things that we should be able to adjust for this problem if there's some uniformity. But if, if there isn't, I had to give a list out yesterday to our lawyers of each judge saying, okay, here's what this judge said on pre-trials, here's what this judge said on pre-trials, here's what this judge said on pre-trials, and they're different. So that, that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about. If we could, if we could all get on the same page and say, here's the rule. You know, if the rule, even if I don't agree with the rule, if it's all the same, at least we know what the hell we're doing.
I have some more questions.
Well, I, I would like to make one quick point and then you can get a second five minutes, Commissioner Kavanaugh. The, the supplemental budget, when we looked, we have canceled the next two county board meetings. We looked at what was on the agenda before we made that decision and recognized your supplemental budget. I discussed it with Joel Lorenz and similar to the election commissioner, he said, we can deal with it on the seventh, that'll be in time so long as you have a.
Absolutely.
Feel that it is, that it is coming. We will be meeting again on April 7th. We may be doing it telephonically, I don't know, it sounds like we may have that opportunity. So I'm not sure what it will look like, but we are planning on meeting again on April 7th and we'll be able to take up that supplemental budget at that time.
All right. Thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I, I think you raised some good points relative to this uniformity and how the courts are dealing with it and probably a conversation with the chief justice might be something that'll help you alleviate that. The, the concern on the correction center is people going in and out are potential vectors coming, coming out and going in. And without testing, we don't know, even with temperatures, you know, who is infected and who isn't. So the sooner we can get that set shut down and minimized, the better for the community. I mean, yes, the population in there is probably going to get infected. How much of that infection comes out is a relative question to people going in and out. And so, you know, I'm just urging everybody, and you're on the front line of this, to make sure that you get that number as low as possible. And, you know, in conversations with some of our public safety people, they're indicating that they're gonna use their discretion in charge, in, in citing people.
That's the only misdemeanors though, Jim.
I understand, but every little bit counts. And, you know, the county attorney who's here has discretion over charging people as well. There are some national information available that I've forwarded to both of you relative to what other jurisdictions are doing on exactly that point, to bring things down and populations down. These captive populations pose a clear and present danger to our larger community. And so limiting our contact, bringing people in and out of those is essential to containment and flattening the curve of this. And I commend you and your office and Don and, and Mike as well for, for everything you're doing to, to do that. We're all in this together. So thanks for bringing this before us and you've done a great job on this and we look forward to working with you.
Okay.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Thank you, Tom, for what you're doing here, but I also have some information that I was just going to forward you from our National Association of Counties of what other jurisdictions are doing. And again, you know, the, you're right, you, you have so much control, but like, just for instance, the Iowa Supreme Court issued an order of, you know, postponing all jury trials. And again, that uniformity and everybody being on the same page is what we're looking for here. So, you know, whatever we can do to help with that as well for that push. And then, of course, the pre-trial, I know you guys have been working really hard, but again, no uniformity or no real.
It would help.
Direction, so, but it would help, so, but thank you.
Okay, just let me comment on the, if, if, if the chief justice decides to postpone jury trials, that's fine if you're out on bond.
Right.
If you're not out on bond, that means, you know, Mike's population is going to increase because everyone that wants a trial is gonna be sitting there. Now, what I worry about with that, and this is my pushback on those kind of things, is people who maybe have a defense say, I gotta sit here another six months, screw it, I'll just plead and try to get out of here. I mean, that goes against my, my grain and, you know, obviously the client has total control over will they plead or not. And I just don't wanna see that be a significant factor in whether someone decides to go to trial or not. So while I, I, I just had a murder trial that was supposed to start yesterday and last week it was continued till April 13th and from, it was March, I guess March 13th and now it moved to April 13th. Whether that's gonna change the dynamics at all is highly questionable. I don't know that we're not gonna be in the same boat. And, you know, this, this, this guy charged with two counts of first-degree murder, pled not guilty, and we're ready for trial. The state's ready for trial, now we're just kind of in a holding pattern. So it's, it's, you know, like, like everyone had said before, these are unusual times.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Tom, one of the things that the county board is, one issue that we're particularly concerned about is bail. And there have been other communities that. And there have been other communities that have had some success in getting people out of custody with some, sometimes, extreme measures to even paying the bail. I mean, we're trying to keep the numbers down, and it's extremely expensive. Mike Myers has told us pretty recently that nearly a million dollars could be saved by... And I believe that's, I don't know, not monthly, but annually or whatever. It's a lot of money, whatever. A million dollars could be saved if we could get some of these, some movement on bail. And it's not anything we can discuss this morning necessarily, but I just want to bring it up because I know there's not necessarily a uniform support for that. I mean, you know, but some of these folks are in there on pretty low bail that they just can't afford.
You'd be surprised what an emergency like this will do for getting people together.
Yeah.
Matt Cousy, Don, myself, and Mike have generated lists of people
Oh, my God.
...on low-grade offenses, and we're working to either, if they're going to be pleased
Yeah.
...to move them up and get them into court and get them moved along. You know, in some instances, we may be able to waive a pre-sentence investigation and just get them sentenced if we can agree.
Agreed.
We're not going to agree on everything.
No.
And maybe there's some people even who, you know, if someone's in jail on a low-grade felony and the bond is 250 bucks and they can't make it, maybe you can just say, you know, "If you're willing to go 250, can't we just ROR them? You know, release them on their own recognizance." You know, you can't do that if they've missed 20 court appearances in the last five years. But, you know, if the situation is correct and we're looking at them, you know, we can move these things forward a little bit more.
That's good.
And we're not necessarily on the same team, but we're in the same swimming pool.
Right.
You know? So...
Well, that's good news.
Maybe that's a crappy analogy, but...
No, that's great news. And last night, when I was leaving the parking garage, I saw Matt Cousy, and I yelled to him. I says, "How's the persecution going?" I shouldn't have done that. Should've said prosecution, but I couldn't help myself. Anyway...
Actually, they, you know, there's a lot of agreement on some of the low-hanging fruit, as I would call it.
Yeah.
And we're moving along those lines. We just actually just had a conversation 15 minutes ago with Mike and Don and myself about maybe putting a list together of people who have, that are in jail that have, are at risk older
Yeah.
...with some pre-existing health conditions. Maybe we can get them moved along either time and costs or a bond review. You know, you just don't want... You know, the other side is, where the hell do they go? Some of them.
Yeah.
You know, they have nowhere to go. And that's why we've got to kind of move the case through. You put them out on bond, you might not see them again. Even though they're not really a flight risk, you lose contact with them.
Right. Okay, well, that's great news.
So, there's lots of issues here.
Anything we can do to help, let us know. We're interested in that, that's for sure.
For the update, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. Thank you.
I've got to say, I'm wondering who to go with next because there's so many people in here I have so much respect for, and I know that we're going on longer than I meant to. But we've just heard from the public defender. I'd ask the county attorney to come next and share what you're doing and tell us what he's doing wrong.
Tom Klein, Douglas County Attorney, he's doing everything right.
Okay, fine.
And I'll be very brief. But, you know, what we're doing is, is we're trying to comply with all the CDC guidelines within the office and yet serve the public the best of our ability and continue to serve the public. So, our office is still open. I guess I'm going to start in a different arena first, and that's the civil division, which is, you know, I just have to say, they've done a tremendous amount of work recently, and I know you're all aware of it because you've been on phone calls with Teresa Urick and some of our other staff, pretty much constantly, it seems like, with regard to advising about the law and different issues with regards to the office. And so, we do have a plan. We have a continuation of our operation plan for both the civil division, the juvenile division, this criminal division, and our convicted witness unit. So, we've got that in place. We're trying to stagger employees so in case somebody, God forbid, would get sick in the office and everybody has to be quarantined, we still have some people that are safe that could come in and still work or work from home. So, that's an important aspect of all this. So, that continues. Another separate function is the coroner function. Our autopsies are continuing. We're on-call all 24 hours a day in that regard. There have been some questions that have come up, and I've talked to Dr. Poor about with regards to somebody passing from this illness at the biocontainment unit in the UNMC. And then, are we going to do the autopsy, or is UNMC going to do the post? So, those kinds of questions are up. Are we capable of doing that without spreading, you know, are people, putting people at risk even in our autopsy unit and laboratories? Those kinds of questions are being addressed on a consistent basis. So, those are very important issues also. The Board of Mental Health continues. I know we're still having hearings on Tuesday and Thursday. That's been a question mark as to what to do in that regard. We want to continue to serve people that have mental health issues that are dangerous to themselves or others. So, we're trying to figure out how to handle that along with the board. And on the criminal division and juvenile division, we obviously deal with victims coming into our office and witnesses coming into our office and law enforcement coming to office all the time. And so, we're trying to limit that as much as we can without putting, again, people at risk, maintaining the standards on social distancing. But it's difficult to do. And we have posters all over our office about, "If you're sick, stay home." And honestly, that's one of the most difficult things because we have such dedicated people who want to work. It's sending them home is one of the most difficult things because they think that they're not going to do their job. And so, but we work with them, and we have tablets also, and people can work remotely and still get to their desktop, and so, we're doing that also. So, we have people working from home and making sure that people who aren't feeling well aren't exposing themselves to everybody else. But it's difficult when you have people coming in to the office. And just like Tom says, people that come into his office, we don't know what risk we're putting ourselves in when they're with us. So, that's a difficult proposition sometimes in this time that we're in. You know, again, I'll try and be brief, but one of the things that we're trying to figure out, we have three jury trials set for next week, and we have witnesses scheduled to come in, trial preparation going on. And as Tom said, you have, every kind of judge is doing a different thing. And as Commissioner Borgeson said, you know, the state of Massachusetts has suspended jury trials. Iowa has. The federal courts have. Judge Gerard issued a federal order saying that we can't comply. I've met with the clerk of the district court, John Friend, who says, "I can't..." And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn by telling you what John said. He says, "I can't comply with the CDC orders or the orders of the government on groups of 10. We have 12 people on a felony jury." So, it's difficult. It's a difficult process, and we'd like to have some direction from the Supremes in that regard so that we would know what to do, even from a trial prep standpoint and having people coming into our office. So, we're looking for some guidance, and I know we've worked, working with John to try and figure that out, and John maybe has some comments to make about that, to try and figure out what we can do from an overall directive with regard to... You know, these jurors do a great civic duty by being summoned and coming in to do their civic duty. And certainly, I think it's, it would be irresponsible to expose them to each other and to everybody else when they're trying to do what they're supposed to do. So, that's a question that I think everybody's trying to figure out how to deal with, and it's a concern. And we'd like to have just some direction at this point in time, balancing the, again, the speedy trial rights of the defendant with the public interest and maintaining the public health. So, all those things are going on. Like I said, I don't want to keep going here, but we're working with it, and if you have any questions or if there's any direction we need, we'll certainly be available to listen to them. We want to try and stay open as much as possible. We want to continue to serve the public. I said, we have victims, witnesses, people who are looking for protection orders, domestic violence cases that we need to serve. And so, we're doing that as much as we can with keeping the guidelines that we've been given by the medical profession to make sure that we don't have people that are exposed. So...
Thank you, Don.
Sure.
I have a few questions for you, Commissioner Borgeson.
Thanks, Don, for what you're doing here. And I know this just seems unsettling a lot of times because we're kind of going in all kinds of directions. But have you had any of the, I guess, courts or judges saying that they're going to move to teleconferencing?
Yeah, there's a couple of them right now that are doing a teleconference. I know Judge Wheelock has set up... He is in a remote location and doing a teleconference Skype thing with regard to... He's still running his courtroom. There's also been talk about doing that from a bond setting perspective. We have an order now that says that, you know, prisoners aren't to be transported, so that lends itself to making it have to happen that way. We still have courtroom 50 open over in the correctional facility that we're doing bond settings at. But certainly, there's a movement to try and figure out some way to, so that we don't have to transport people and don't have to have person-to-person contact if available. But it's like Tom said, there's certain situations where you just can't do that. So...
Right. But that is being
Yes.
...used, but we hope or will try to increase the utilization of that where necessary.
Yes. And as Mr. Riley stated, there's situations where we've gotten together, and I think we're going to be able to even just agree so the judge could just sign an order with regard to a bond and not even have to have a hearing where somebody's there.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Doing a good job. This is very, very tough, I know. The situation that you indicate with the court and not having a consistent, like, court policy is something that maybe the Supreme Court can help you and Tom...
Well, I know that our presiding judge of the district court has contacted the Supreme Court and tried to get some direction, but hasn't... There's been an order, but it's not kind of what we're looking for yet.
Right. My understanding is, that's an evolving process, and they would like, the chief justice would like to hear from you. And Tom, obviously, he's indicated that he'd have to hear from you both at the same time on the same call, but that's up to you. I think what you're dealing with and how you're dealing with it is responsible and heads up and going forward. It's, you know, going to be difficult for everybody. But you heard the public defender and others request some resource allocation. Is there anything you particularly need resource-wise in addition to what you have?
I think we've got as much hand sanitizer as we can right now, but we do have, thankfully, we, in the past, I wasn't even aware of it, had the Surface Pros that we've gotten that the lawyers can use from home and be able to make contact with the office. So, we're in fairly good shape in that regard with regard to technology and equipment.
Right.
So, I'm very thankful for that foresight of the board that we were able to have that, and we're using it. So, it's very helpful.
So, you know, a big concern, as you heard, is people going into and coming out of the correction center because it is such a captive population that, once it gets infected like these ships, it will spread rapidly. And so, limiting that contact and working remotely is one way of doing that or using technology. Do you have the technology to do what you need to do, not sending people in there, but maybe doing it from a remote location?
Well, we don't really have to go there. We still have to go to courtroom 50 to do the bond settings, and we have an individual on our DV, misdemeanor people have to go in there for those, but that's about the only situation that we have. And I think there, we've been in discussions with Mr. Myers and Mr. Riley, again, about... I know Mike is trying to have an area that, if he had to quarantine people in corrections, he could have open. So, that's, the goal is to try and move some people out so that he can have that space, and we'll see what we can do in that regard.
So, I guess the second part of that would be, if you had to, you know, tell people to self-quarantine, work from home, do you have the capacity to have them still be able to technologically do their work from a remote location?
Yes, we do. If they have the Surface Pro, the dot coms wave, which is the VPN access for everybody. So, they have access to their desktop from home. So, at least they can use their computer and things. Obviously, they're not going to be able to visit with people or witnesses or victims, in that case, or law enforcement, but that still can take place.
And, you know, one of the things that's come up in discussions with everybody involved in this is to make sure that we have compatible technology in the county attorney's office, the public defender's office, corrections, and the courts so that they can actually work together. And we're acquiring technology as we go, but I know that that's something that, you know, from the Supreme Court on down, they're very, very sensitive to the fact that everything is compatible so that it can communicate with the other components that it's going to have to communicate with in the system.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, we're trying to do that. I think we are compatible from the standpoint of our... One of the things that we would talk about in that regard is just the discovery process, making sure that the equipment we have or the discs that we have are something that the public defender can use or attorneys of private practice can use and have access to the material that's on those discs.
The final thing, and this is kind of just under your official hat as our legal advisor, you may have heard the discussion that we had earlier with the election commissioner relative to our powers to, you know, go to an entirely vote-by-mail system or some other system because of the emergency. I'm just throwing that out there because we would like some legal guidance on that if and when that comes down to the...
And then, I looked right to Teresa Urick and that...
Where your able assistant...
To do some research in that regard.
Yes. Great job.
Yeah, we're receiving requests for legal assistance pretty much hourly, if not more. And so, we'll certainly take a look at that for you, Commissioner, but we'll need to look at several... There are several different statutes that are in play.
Great. Thank you. And thanks.
And that's what I mean about the civil division and what we're doing together in advising all the different office holders and the board itself. So, and I thank the board for your direction, and I, as a member of the public, also watch you folks on the news conferences and giving people direction. I think that's so important to show that kind of leadership in the community, and I'm very appreciative of that. So, thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, I'm going to go to Captain Hudson next, if I may. We've got a few people here, and then, Mr. Myers. I know you've both been waiting a couple hours for this, and I appreciate your patience. I had a conversation with Sheriff Nunning yesterday and asked if he'd like to come down and give a report, and he said he would prefer to have Captain Hudson come give it. So, good morning, Wayne, and thank you for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to address you today. We at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office recognize that we are in uncharted territory with this virus. But as we have done in the past, we will do with this situation. With the help from our community, our medical and public health professionals, and our fellow first responders, we shall address the situation head-on, and we will be successful. We have, we want the citizens of Douglas County to know that the Douglas County Sheriff's Office is working diligently in preparing for the possible spread of COVID-19. Our efforts are concentrated into three specific areas: preventing community spread, maintaining critical law enforcement services, and ensuring the safety and wellness of all of our employees. To that, we have done the following. We have reviewed our all-hazard plan to ensure we can continue with our statutory-required functions with little to no interruptions. We are reviewing scenarios on how we will provide critical law enforcement services with a reduction of 30% of our forces. We have ordered supplies to ensure the safety and wellness of our staff. We are evaluating which of our employees can perform their duties while working from home. It has also been a longstanding practice of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to respond with a deputy to every call for service. This practice will be suspended until such time as we get past this emergency situation. In the meantime, we are standing up a telephone report line to take low-priority calls. This system will be identical to what is currently being used by the Omaha Police Department. Deputies are being instructed to limit their contact with the public. During certain calls for service, the public may be asked to come outside and meet the deputy outside to take the report. Seeing that the schools will be closed for an unknown amount of time, we are reassigning our school resource officers to support our mission-critical functions. Access to all sheriff facilities will be restricted, and we have stopped all non-criminal fingerprint services until further notice. We have seen a significant increase in the amount of residents seeking gun permits. At times, our front lobby is standing room only. Therefore, we will no longer be processing gun permits on the spot. Nebraska State statute allows for three business days to process these requests, and we're going to take those three days. All sex offenders will temporarily register via video system and telephone. In closing, I want to say to this body, let this body know that we are constantly reevaluating our needs as an agency. If there is something that we need that will help us effectively combat this virus, we will ensure to bring it before this board. Now, I'll have Captain Sellers come up and talk about what the court system is doing as far as the Court Services Bureau. as far as the Court Services Bureau. And after that, we'll take any questions.
Good afternoon. Captain Eric Sellers with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, 1616 Leavenworth. Just quickly, we've, the downtown division, the Court Services Division, has been working with Mike, the presiding judges, the county attorney, the city prosecutor on movement of prisoners, what to do with everyone, the court cases. And it's kind of really what we're doing. We're minimizing contact between prisoners, the public, deputies, employees to just a very bare amount needed and that's really what we're doing down here right now. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a couple of questions. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, Captain, I'm going to ask you, are you, because of the virus, are you, what are you changing in operations? Are you responding to calls as you normally would and all that sort of thing? And what are you doing to protect the
We currently are. We currently are responding to calls. If this virus becomes more widespread, then we're going to go to a posture similar to what the fire department is doing now where they have some pre-screening questions that they ask the public before EMS arrives. Again, if it goes, if it spreads, then we'll end up doing that same posture. But again, we're going to try to push as many people as we can to our telephone report line.
Okay, is that, when you're screening people, is that 911 that does that?
Correct.
Okay. And so they're doing that, I guess, with all their calls then, huh?
Correct.
Okay. And if you could, could you provide us with a map of the territory that you cover? Because I ran into someone who was annexed by the city who remained nameless, but anyway, who's very interested in having, still having the sheriff patrol the area and I was curious whether they were even close to your territory. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Again, not a problem.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
A couple of things. You have, I think, 27 officers here on court security staff. Is that about right?
That's about right. We have a little bit more than that.
There are 13 entry security officers in addition to that?
That's about correct.
And then 15 building security officers in addition to that?
Correct.
Okay. So you heard probably some of the previous testimony from our criminal justice folks and the public defenders and the county attorney's office about there's going to be less and maybe no transport between corrections and the Hall of Justice. What's your average daily population coming back and forth out of corrections and back? Do you know?
I'll defer to Captain Sellers on that one.
And has that been affected so far by the crisis?
I'll answer that really quick. The short answer is I don't have the number right off. Those numbers have not changed. It's really going to take effect tomorrow. And who isn't coming over? Prisoners will not be coming over for certain hearings, unnecessary hearings that can be taken care of over at corrections. But they'll still be coming over here. So we will be weeding out a few unnecessary hearings. I shouldn't even call them unnecessary. They're hearings that we can, we'll take care of over there in the meantime instead of bringing them over, just to limit that exposure I spoke of earlier. But I do not have the number of how many come over on a daily basis right now.
That's fine. Just saying that that might be affected in, you know, if we're successful in limiting the in and out from the correction center or eliminating it ideally, that might be, you know, loosening up some resources there. In addition to, you know, worst-case scenario is that the courts go to a very limited activity and maybe do that from a remote location, which would maybe free up some of the resources of the 27 officers that you had. I did look at a map of your area of jurisdiction and it's enormous. I mean, it's, I don't know if it's, you know, 50% of the geographical area of Douglas County, but it's a large percentage of the geographical area of Douglas County. And so presuming that, you know, going forward, you're going to have to patrol and provide security for that area, I think planning on maybe some of these resources not being quite as necessary because the numbers should come down hopefully would be a good thing.
And then two of us are making a plan to, if we need to move personnel temporarily that, where I can put those personnel if not needed down here out to patrol. So we are working on a plan.
Now, in terms of resources that the sheriff's office needs, you've heard our previous office holders and department heads, you know, say that we need this, we need that. And, you know, coming in contact particularly on patrol with people or transporting people or whatever, do you have adequate, you know, masks and other materials that you would need or are you going to have to order some more?
We have ordered more supplies. We have enough right now to sustain us for a short time, but the chief and the sheriff have authorized, I mean, close to about $10,000 worth of protective equipment.
Okay. And presumably, you know, if that's exceeding your budget, you'd come back to us for a resource allocation there. And it's important that we have the most robust public safety presence that you provide to the citizens outside the municipal jurisdictions in Douglas County and do a great job, but I know it's going to be tough and anticipating that, you know, God forbid, but some of our first responders at the sheriff's office come down with the virus, there's going to be some difficulty in, you know, moving staff around. So I'm glad to hear you've got a plan. Thanks for working on this and kudos on what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Interesting times. Mr. Myers, thank you for your patience. I'm sure you had nothing better to be doing today than waiting a couple hours for us. Thank you so much for coming down, Mike. I turn next to our jail director, Mike Myers.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll start with a couple of things that are related to topics that you've already heard about this morning. One, we will be working with all of the interested parties in the court system to try to stand up the video conferencing for incarcerated inmates as quickly as possible. I have a call this afternoon regarding that. We shifted our paradigm on that. We were, you know, we have some video visitation capabilities. That's a very secure system through our vendor that's onsite. Trying to build that out will take too much time, the way that it's set up. Those go-to fixed stations inside of the housing units in the jail, to increase that capacity is something we're still challenging our vendor to do, but that simply won't happen fast enough. So we're going to work around that, use our Wi-Fi system. You know, we would have never dreamed of handing an internet-capable tablet to an inmate, but that's exactly what we're developing protocols to do so that we can keep the wheels of justice moving forward. So we will have, you know, an unbudgeted expense. I'm not, I'll have to consult with my partners in the criminal justice, in the county attorney and public defender's office and the courts, see how many of these do I need to buy. They are buying them, you know, for their, all of their attorneys. I don't know how many of them they're going to be using simultaneously, which will then guide the number that we need to purchase because obviously we don't need to purchase 1,000 of them for all of our inmates because they're not all going to have a court proceeding at the same time. We also, the last remaining non-employees or permanently placed contractors, meaning our medical and food service vendors are obviously still coming in and providing their services. Other than that, the only exception is the construction project. It is in our interest to try to get that done as quickly as possible because we don't know how this will play out, whether our population will go down. There's a lot of scenarios and reasons that you might think it would. We've also heard from others this morning about how it could go in the other direction. So getting those, I have not pulled that yet. I am going to be working with public properties. I spoke with Jerry Leahy and Jeff McGill yesterday, working to reach out to the contractor and the subs. If anything, I want them to start working faster. We are on the last two units. There's a couple other units that are in service, but we can kick that down, that they have to come back to and do some things, but that can be kicked down the road. So if we can get those units back in service, we will have to pay for the overtime costs that if they're agreeable to start working, you know, 12-hour days to try and get those last two units available to us a few weeks earlier, we will have that. There may or may not be actually funds left over in the bond fund to accomplish that without having to come back to you. I don't, I don't know that for certain at this point. But that is our plan, is to try and get those units or to ask the contractors if they're willing to work longer days, maybe even weekends, whatever it takes to try and get those units available to us, especially in the fact that when you consider that if we do need to start segregating inmates who are sick, that's going to, that's effectively going to decrease our bed capacity. So getting those last two units back into service as quickly as possible is a priority. So that is the exception to the rule of basically shutting down all public access to the jail that we currently have enforced. For me to go over our plans with you, I would keep you here for several hours. So I'll just leave it that we have, we've been working on this for weeks. We are obviously not working from home. We, none of our staff really can do that. We have, but we're doing everything we can, everything that's advised, to change our behavior, to change how we move about the jail, who goes into which units, how we allocate staff to particular areas, how we deliver mail and food and laundry and everything in and out of housing units. All of those things are being modified to mitigate our risks. And we know that we will not eliminate them, but we do want to mitigate them as much as we can. Our, my, obviously I want to keep the inmate population healthy. Given that most people who get this disease will not require serious medical attention, it may be even a higher priority to keep our staff healthy. We've worked out a plan of about 14 different phases where we can gradually reduce operations and consolidate staff to get us down to a point where if we were in a truly worst-case scenario, where we could probably operate the jail with about 60 to 70% of our correctional officers being available. Doing that for a prolonged period will be a huge stress on our staff. It'll cause them to continue to engage in great personal sacrifice in terms of overtime and et cetera that we would be forcing them to work. We would also be forced to, under worst-case scenarios, we're not there yet. We're only maybe about four steps down in that 14-phase, you know, plan. You know, but it comes down to locking down units, basically going into a night shift mode 24 hours a day in terms of our staffing. We actually had some experience with that last summer when our population spiked and we were at a critical difference between the amount of staff we had on hand and the staff that we needed. What we did in that circumstance is we sort of did rolling lockdowns where we had staff that we could move from unit to unit to unit so that we could open them up. The inmates can make phone calls. The inmates can have an opportunity for recreation to move around. They just don't have that as often as they, as they would normally have it. And that would be a scenario, you know, we don't want to get there for a prolonged fashion anyway. That is something that does tend to create tension and unrest among the inmate population. So we want to do everything we can to mitigate that in the first place. We have done some things where we got in the front of the line before other jails did. We've secured a significant inventory of electronic monitors, remote breathalyzers that people can, we can use from their home, and also the drug testing patches so that we can offer to the courts the opportunity to provide supervision for people who are pre-trial. We can track their whereabouts. We can continue testing for drugs and alcohol without having to have regular daily contact with the individuals while they are, while they are at home. We have, the 24/7 sobriety program has pretty much all been converted to a remote system and we basically can use the technologies that we have for that program and for our house arrest program to provide an array of supervision options for judges. If they don't feel comfortable completely just releasing somebody on their own recognizance due to particular risk factors, we can offer that as a, as an option as well. I also do want to thank the board for their support and also the collaboration that we've had recently, well, not recently, historically, but it's stepped up to another level with our criminal justice partners. There's a lot of steps that we're all taking to work together, both to just in our daily operations and from a more strategic level because it is important. It was, there is published guidance to jurisdictions on trying to reduce your jail populations during this time. So we are trying to do everything we can to accomplish those goals.
We have several questions for you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And Mike, thanks for this update. I know that you've been working hard on this. The question of expense that you touched on, like everybody else that's come before you, please let us know if and when you're going to need that. The construction question is an interesting one because you've got to balance there between trying to increase your capacity for beds and trying to limit the people coming in and out of your facility. And I know that you're sensitive to that, but has the population come down at all since the onset of this crisis?
A little bit. We were up closer to 1,300 a week or 10 days ago. We saw, we got down to about, in the round, 1240, 1245 on Friday. We normally see an uptick over the weekends because there's no court. And so, but our high point a week ago to where we are today is slightly less.
And I think somebody gave us a number earlier.
It was 12, you know, I have my phone.
Like 1245 or something like that?
It's like 12, it's around 1270, give or take. And, you know, so it has come down a little. You know, we're continuing to work. I know that Judge Lowhouse, the presiding judge of county court, I've been working with quite closely, maybe as we speak, or she's probably already done, went down there to do specifically to courtroom 50 to do early pleas for several individuals so that they can be released today. I should comment on courtroom 50 as well. I did call Judge Lowhouse early this morning about the 10-person limit and asked if that's something she wanted us to do because that really would prolong court for, to make it from a, you know, a couple-hour commitment on the judge's behalf to potentially an all-day experience. So we are, we're not following the 10-person limit in courtroom 50, but we are bringing people down in smaller groups enough so that we can separate at least a chair or two before everyone who's in our court holding room and everyone who's in the courtroom. We've also measured to make sure that the, everything is six feet apart from where the attorneys are, from where the defendant is and to where the judge is. So we've, we're doing everything we can to be as careful as we can without grinding everything to a halt.
Right. You know, there are some things, and I know that you've looked into this in conjunction with your criminal justice partners, that we could do in terms of lowering the population by, you know, maybe not incarcerating probation violation, bond, misdemeanor bond skips, 24/7 violations. And I know you're in the talks with these people. I encourage you to continue that. The Supreme Court, which is kind of overseeing the judicial branch of this, is something that I also would encourage you to join those discussions with the chief justice so that we can get kind of a uniform plan on this
Absolutely.
Rather than a court-by-court, judge-by-judge rule. The testing options that you're talking about, you know, anticipate, I think you already have, the fact that you're going to have to test your staff and tests are available, people coming in and out are going to have to be tested. Population probably going to have to be tested because once this closed captive population becomes effective, it's going to, as you know from last year's epidemic, spread rapidly. So, you know, I'm just encouraging you to be very, very sensitive to discussions of how are you going to test your staff, your population, people coming in and out, and then limiting it. It might be that the construction needs to be delayed.
That certainly, that's on the list of ways to consolidate staff because we actually, we have to commit officers to that project to provide security to those areas, to escort when they need to get a different tool and officer accompanies them in and out of the construction area. So, like I said, I've weighed that, the risk of having those construction workers in the facility with, with the benefit of getting those
Yeah, it's a real balancing test.
That's one, you know, if I, if we can get it done faster
Sure.
You know, but if we do have an outbreak in the jail and staffs are getting sick, we will have to
Yeah, and that's probably inevitable. So the fact that you're, you know, gaming the worst-case scenario of downsizing the staff and locking down the facility is an excellent one. I hate to say this, but you want to hope for the best and prepare for the worst.
Absolutely.
And that's very likely to come. Thanks for your heads up, getting out in front of this thing and your planning. I know you've spent tons of time on this. Kudos.
Thank you, and I have a wonderful team.
Well, let us know. Anything we can do would help. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Mike, I wanted to ask you, I know that, I understand what you're doing, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're, you have a unit that you've cleared out in the event that illness occurs and that's where you plan to house the people who are ill?
That unit is not closed as of yet. It actually could be one of two units.
Okay.
Within, within the, our capacity of the jail, there are subsets that we have to consider. And, so we want, you know, this is obviously a celled housing unit. It's not an open bay housing unit like where the veterans' unit is, for instance. Those are medium and maximum security beds. We have a finite supply of them.
Right.
So we have a, one unit that we recently have you, that has women in it in this area. So when we, we're going to be monitoring our female population as well as our need for medium and maximum beds. Whichever one of those is less at the time we need it will be when we move the people out of that, out of that, you know, one of those two units, consolidate accordingly, whether it's medium, maximum beds for men or consolidate and run up and operate with one fewer female housing units.
So who, who will care for those inmates?
Our, we will work carefully. Actually, I have a call this afternoon with our medical director through our contracted provider, Wellpath, their physician, a couple of our staff, a couple of their leadership, and with the health department this afternoon to talk about protocols for that so that i- if we are, if we are forced to care for people who have the virus.
Right.
It, it'll be our onsite medical staff with the assistance and advice from outside experts as we need it.
Well, I wonder whether, would it, would it make more sense to try to move these folks to UNMC or someplace else because they're, they're doing this for others?
Absolutely. In, in certain circumstances, that may be the case. Again, not everybody who needs, who has this, who will catch this virus will need to be hospitalized.
Right.
So we don't want, it's a balancing act. It's not, doesn't, it's bigger than, you know, i- I have, it's bigger than just us when it comes to the healthcare resources in the community. So we will work with, if we have that case come up, we'll immediately gauge, engage with the health department. They have their connections with the medical community to help us make those critical decisions in the moment when they arise.
All right. Then you, you already mentioned you're probably going to accelerate the construction. Is that right? I think that's a good idea.
I, that's the, for now, that's the plan. As with everything, it, sometimes it doesn't even turn out to be the plan of the day. It's the plan of the moment.
Okay.
So things, things change rapidly.
And one other thing, a couple of things I wanted to ask you. One is, you know, there is a really effective program with United Way that diverse, that diverts the people, that judges order them to diversion in United Way. Is there any way for you to connect with that? I mean, I, I know when you have inmates who are, you know, maybe who have a low bail, a low hanging fruit, is there any way for you to get them into that diversion program instead of that? Maybe they've already turned it down. I don't know.
You know, I, I think that that is on a, as cases, you know, every case is unique that comes through and, and that's, all of the options should be on the table.
All right.
As well as, you know, the, you know, there may be limited opportunities for folks to do those sorts of community service activities.
Actually, it's surprising. They have DUIs and so other people like that as well, but I'll, I'll talk to them and get them together with you.
Thank you.
And the last, I want to speed through this if I can. You mentioned something about the court that, because we don't have judges over the weekend or night, that you have people that are still there. So I know this is something Commissioner Borgerson really pushes, and I am very interested as well. I think, you know, there are, I, seriously, I think there are close to 4,000 lawyers in Omaha. I'm not kidding. And 4,202 with us, Jim. But anyway, so, anyway, there's plenty of lawyers out there that would jump at the chance of, you know, being a magistrate or some sort of a judge in the evening. I really think we need to pursue that with the governor and possibly even Senator Lathrop, who's the head of the judiciary.
I was just.
I just make that comment because that could really accelerate things. I don't, of course, it would require attorneys being present as well from both offices.
So, you know, you look for silver linings.
Yeah.
In situations like this and, and, you know, we have asked the questions before to the judges about can we do weekend court?
Yeah.
And haven't really gotten a, you know, but if everybody gets used to the fact that, yes, we can operate remotely and, and handle these things in a different way during this crisis, we may have the blueprint for something that's more sustainable going forward when this is all over.
And I think we could get somebody else. We don't have to have the judges that are there now working weekends. We'd get somebody new, you know, who, who wants to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, Mike. You guys have done extraordinary work over there, and we appreciate that. Couple of things, when you, is there a possibility for you to produce a video that could be played on the TVs for our incarcerated men and women, for them to understand what we are doing over there? I know there's conversations, I'm sure, going on when our guards go into the mods, but I think if, maybe work with Leah, you could kind of put everybody's mind at ease and again, just keep them updated about what's going on.
Yes, and we actually, I just had an email about, we just switched to a new, for the sake of just keeping it simple, a closed-circuit TV vendor.
Right.
And, and we just changed vendors and coronavirus messaging and the impacts are going to be included and uploaded onto our TV system very soon.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, we're stopping our meeting now. We just lost our quorum. We will resume the meeting when we have a quorum again. I'm sorry, we're done. Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you still part of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, then we still have a quorum. Please continue. I saw you leaving. Never know what you're up to. Please continue.
So the second, Mike, Commissioner Boyle mentioned the United Way. I also want to mention, and I know you've had conversations with them, is reconnecting that can help those who, you know, we've recessed out to find jobs.
Absolutely.
Which I think is probably more important than community services at this point. But again, I just wanted to, to mention that. But again, I can't tell you how impressed I am with what work you've done on this with a very difficult situation that we have here. So, and if there's anything we can do to help, please let us know. But again, great, great job.
Thank you.
All right.
I had one more thing that I omitted.
Please.
From just a general update. As you know, we suspended onsite public visitation. There, it turned out to be a software issue to overcome to, to convert those. We have 60 stations, if you go just past our lobby for the public to visit. Those are being converted and made, made available for professional visits to be done from there so that they don't go, they come through the lobby, but they don't go any further than that. There, it took a few hours to, to, I won't get into all the IT stuff because it's outside my lane, but, so we are, I asked a few weeks ago of our video visit, our remote video visitation vendor, and again, this goes back to that it's harder to create that capacity because those visits are, are basically hardwired straight to the housing unit through the video visitation stations. We, we have a more limited capacity than we have had, so visits with the public are going to have to be rationed. We are working to increase that capacity. Those solutions take time like everything else takes time in this, and, and we're not the only ones now asking. I, I did remind them who asked first and try to keep us at the top of the list, you know, for, for those resources from the companies, that are from the company that provides it. But as you hear from concerned constituents, we're doing everything we can to, to increase that capacity. It will likely not be anywhere close to what we had when we had onsite visitation because the number that we can do concurrently through the internet right now is a much smaller number than 60 when we had those 60 onsite video visitation stations. So we're, we're working towards making that more accessible. Our vendor is offering some humanitarian relief to our inmates in terms of they're providing a couple of free phone calls per week. And I haven't seen this officially, but I'm told they will be doing a free 15-minute internet visit per week per inmate as well. So that's kind of been their response to that, but the public will have to be patient. You know, we'll work with people as best we can.
I think that's a good point. And visitations, you know, again, it's not just in our correctional facility, but, you know, we've, we've cut off visitation completely to long-term care. I know there's hospitals that are doing it now. And again, I think the more information that we can continue to provide, not only for the public, but for those we're serving inside of our facilities, will go a long way.
Visitation area, will these be the professional visits face-to-face or remotely?
No, they are, so, under normal circumstances, this is where the public would have gone to visit. They go, they go to our lobby, get checked in, and then they go, and then right just past our lobby, there are rows of visitation stations.
That's what I'm saying. Are they on a tablet or something?
No, they are, it, it's a, there's a headset and a screen.
Right. So like you see in the movies where there's, what's separating them from the inmate?
The inmate never actually leaves their housing unit. The inmate is up in the jail, so it's a closed-circuit connection basically between the inmate and the visitor. So what, we, we have 60 stations. So what we would do if, if, if we had a, a private attorney who's outside of the interventions that we're using for the public defender's office for, we still have evaluations of various sorts which can, which are critical to get people out of the jail, chemical dependency evaluations, psychological evaluations and so forth.
I understand that. I'm just talking about in-and-out traffic.
Yeah.
This would still require people to come into the facility and leave the facility.
Correct, but they wouldn't penetrate into where the inmates are.
I understand, I understand. Thank you. And, you know, the visitation, shutting down visitation occurred when?
At the conclusion of Saturday evening.
Okay. And so there's no visitation for the foreseeable future?
Well, there, there's a limited capacity for the online visits that people can do from their homes. We're trying to increase the capacity of that system.
And I think the same has occurred at the youth center and the health center. I wish they were here today to talk about because we have similar captive populations. As a matter of fact, the health center has probably the most vulnerable population, so limiting in and out there is probably as crucial as any place. But thanks for this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I believe that's done. We, we did touch on that the health center stopped visitors a week ago. Next, I, Mr. Friend, the clerk of the district court, John Friend, if you have anything to share with us about your corner of the world right now, John?
Very little, but my ears did perk up when I heard Tom Riley talking about jury trials. I'm like, whoa. So I thought I'd run over. But the only thing that I have to tell you is, well, first of all, I want to congratulate you on your social distancing because that shows me that you understand how serious this is because the decisions we make today are greatly going to affect that curve two, three weeks from now. Have places in California that are in lockdown there in the same place that we were two, three weeks ago. So thank you, and thank you for not having a meeting in the next two weeks to limit the contact. It's all about social contact, and so that's what we're doing. Like, like Dan is, in his office, we're limiting social contact. We're limiting contact with each other. We've cordoned off the front of the office, so when people come in and ask for something, they have to stop at the, at the welcome desk and tell us what they want at a distance. Staff will interact with them and get them what they need insofar as jury things go. Yes, the Supreme Court, chief justice of the Supreme Court has not given anybody permission to close a courthouse. That's going to be a rare, rare circumstance, but we are, as you well know, in uncharted waters. And social distancing is a key. And I think, you know, these, this thing could change hour by hour. It has all across the world. So that might change. I don't know what the circumstances are, but I can tell you as of now, as your jury commissioner, I cannot accommodate the social distancing required to bring a jury into this building or into the courthouse, even a smaller civil trial. This facility right here is my jury assembly room. I could probably do a small criminal trial and bring them in here, but hold voir dire probably in here. There is no way that I could bring a heavy jury trial, 60, 80 people in here to do a first-degree murder trial as it stands now. Now, all of the jury trials that were scheduled for this week have been postponed. I am watching that list carefully. I can tell you, the judges that I've talked to, both county court and district court, are fully aware of what the risks are, and they're actively looking at those cases and calling in attorneys and getting motions made. And either on their own motion or other, I would expect that these for next week, more the most likely, will be postponed as well. But as currently, there's some, there's some still on the list, but they're being worked. In the future, we will just have to plan as we move forward. If we have to have a large criminal trial somewhere, more the most likely, we'll have to be at a larger location so that we can accommodate the social distancing if we can accommodate that. So we'll see. And like I said, everything's going to change in the next week or two. Everything might completely be different. We might not be standing here for a long time, and we'll see how that all works out.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks, John. Appreciate that. I'm just a poor country lawyer, but aren't there 12 on a jury?
12 and an alternate typically.
Okay, so you'd violate that 10 just by seating a jury. Is that correct? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And, and there's a bigger pool for voir dire to get down to 12 or 13?
Absolutely.
Right, so, so the no jury trial thing is, is for this week as of now? Is that correct?
No, no. There's trials still on schedule. There were trials scheduled for Monday. Friday, the judges involved in those cases transferred those cases or postponed them for a month. We'll see how, April 13th looks like there's a lot of trials scheduled for April 13th. One of them's, one or two of them are big ones. We'll see how that works out. As of this week, right now, there's some scheduled for Monday, but they're being worked diligently by the, by the attorneys and the judges. They're fully aware of, you know, the safety risks associated with this, with the distancing that, that needs to happen anytime you bring anybody into a confined area. They know, and I'm confident in their ability to be able to take care of their business.
Right. So are there any jury trials going on today?
No.
Okay. The staff that you have, and I know from practicing, comes in contact with the public, people coming in and out of your office. Are there any new rules relative to social contact in your office?
Yes, like I said, we've cordoned off the front of the office where people can't walk in there. It's just at the very front. We have a welcome desk. There's lines that are made, you know, kind of like a movie theater, you know, those things that stretch out. So they can't even come up to the counter because a lot of them like to lounge and hang on the counter and talk to people, and they can't even go in there. They've got to stop. What do you need? I need a certified copy of my divorce decree. Stand right there. We'll go get it for you, get the information, get the certified copy, hand it to them, off they go. So we're limiting contact between each other. Distance-wise, we're limiting contact with the general public.
And as far as resources go, do you have adequate resources at this site?
Absolutely. Won't, yeah, won't be darkening your door unless something catastrophic happens.
Right. Thank you. You're doing a good job. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the update. Commissioner Borgerson?
Well, I just wanted to, Mary Visack isn't here, but those in the probation world, I just wanted to let you know that they're in good shape as well, that they've been using their technology. With, of course, the limited visitation, they are concerned about their, the mental health of the youth and the family, so they're making daily contact. And they are working diligently with all involved as well through the court system to try to figure out how to do as much teleconferencing as possible. So I told her I would mention that here today so everybody knows that they're in good shape too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, this, oh, our county clerk, Dan Ash.
I promise I'll try to take no more than a minute. I'm just trying to spread this word as much as possible. The, at 11:48 AM on Tuesday, March 17th, as we all know, things could change, but we have not prohibited the public or employees from coming in the office, but we have asked that, you know, only marriage license applicants come because with the, maybe a few exceptions, really, marriage license applicants are the only ones that need to physically come to the office. There are things, and I really appreciate the cooperation from all the employees so far. It's been very nice. Marriage license applicants, the, you can really help minimize the amount of time you have to spend in our office by filling out the marriage license application ahead of time, which is available on our website. time, which is available on our website. And you could even go a step further if you, for example, if you're watching me right now and you know that today you're going to come in the office, you could even email it to us ahead of time. We can just have it ready for you when you come in, and you could be in and out in a few minutes. Another request that I have for anyone paying attention, any couples watching, if you're not getting married until this summer or this fall, you do not need to come in right now. There is no there is no waiting period in the state of Nebraska. You can get married the same day you get your marriage license. So, you know, to me, I, you know, if you're getting married, I don't I would like to see folks and we're not really going to there's really no way to screen for this, but I just ask if if, you know, if it's your wedding's two weeks away, come on in. But if it's longer than that, I would appreciate it if you would wait until because I'm just really trying to minimize the the interaction. But certainly, if you're getting married this summer or this fall or in the winter, you you can wait. So that's that's all I had.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Thank you for the update. We will conclude the presentations and move on. I only see one person left in the chamber, David Kramer, who's been very patiently waiting for us to he's here on behalf of the Omaha Public Schools as we give consideration to declaring a local emergency. We've added this to the agenda, but Teresa and and frankly, even David, you could add a little bit to what what are we looking at? This is new for me, just a real thumbnail sketch of what are the consequences of the action we are considering here?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. So this doesn't you're correct, Chair Duda, this doesn't happen very often. I believe Chair Rogers did issue a declaration of emergency about a year ago for the flood, and I can't remember the time any time before that. But what this does under Chapter 81, it does allow some more flexibility to the board with regards to purchasing and also meeting the needs of the emergency. And so it loosens up some of the statutory restrictions that we sometimes face. And I believe that's one of the reasons the school districts are are looking for the board to declare an emergency because they need the emergency declaration from the governing body. And I'll let them speak to that.
All right. Thank you. Is that good enough, David? All right. Questions or comments from anybody on the board about this action? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I guess I direct this to our county attorney. The draft that we have before us, local disaster declaration and the accompanying draft of the of the resolution itself, are these work products of the county attorney's office?
I believe I believe Patrick Bloomingdale may have created these particular drafts. I think they're modeled after what happened about a year ago with the with the flood. And I don't recall who wrote the one a year ago.
And just in general, the powers confirmed under Statute 81, 259, et cetera. What are those exactly?
So if I may, I'm going to pull it up so that I can have it before me as I speak with you about it. So if you look at subsection one of that statute, it talks about in the event of a disaster or an emergency, that a local government may enter into emergency expenditures, enter into contracts, and incur obligations for emergency management purposes regardless of existing statutory limitations and requirements. It goes on to explain that a little bit further throughout the rest of that section throughout the rest of that statute. But the idea is to try and meet the needs that become urgent due to the emergency and loosening some of the statutory restrictions.
Sure. So are we talking like restrictions on open meetings, open bidding, those types of things?
I don't think that it changes open meetings specifically. If you look down further in that statute, I refer to subsection two, it talks about expenditures, contracts, and obligations in excess or in violation of existing statutory limits and requirements. So I I don't know that it addresses specifically open meetings, but it's more geared towards buying, contracting, bidding, things of that nature.
So would suspend like, you know, competitive bidding, those types of provisions?
It has the potential to do that. I've talked with Eric Carlson a little bit about this, and they're revising an emergency purchasing policy in line with Chapter 81, and we're we're looking at that this week with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to declare such an emergency. We have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, a second by Commissioner Borgerson. Further comments, questions? Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Borgerson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you all. We have one other routine item that should have gone on to the consent agenda, but I didn't get it there in time, and that's the appointment of Othello Meadows to the Metro Transit Authority Board.
Second.
We have motions and seconds abounding. Pick some anybody you want for for that, Dan, and could we please?
Sure. Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
I left it off my list, county attorney. This emergency declaration that we just passed, when would it terminate?
I believe there's a provision in the statute asking there to be action in order to do that. One moment, please. Let's see. I believe it allows the board to do that as well. I'll refer you to 81-829.50, subsection one, and it speaks that the local governing body may by resolution terminate a local state of emergency proclamation at any time.
So we would take affirmative action to terminate this? Is that the interpretation?
Yeah, and I'd have to look to see if there's another way to do it, but certainly the statute provides for that as an avenue.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The good news, the only silver lining I see to this whole catastrophe we're going through is that the legislature adjourned for the for the year this and we're about to follow suit.
Yep.
Not all bad to see government grind to a halt. Before we adjourn, Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually just want to thank you for your leadership on the county side of things with all of this. As you know, counties are responsible for public health and the health of our public, and thank you for what you've done. I want to thank Dr. Poor and her staff especially. They are just nonstop work on this, and I think sometimes we get a little bit relaxed in our appreciation of what they do. But I just want to thank them for everything they do, as well as all of our staff. I mean, it this is, again, as we've said 100 times today, uncharted territory. And I think your calm leadership of making sure that our staff is taken care of is has been so important with what we're doing here. So I just want to thank you and all the Douglas County staff. And then just lastly, remember to check on each other and especially our elderly.
Yeah, you've been very good about making that point and and what an awesome point. If you got an elderly neighbor, somebody that's shut in, check on them. See how they're doing.
How many are in?
See how Mike's doing.
Video.
Very good. Commissioner Boyle?
Let's see, we have a there's something here. Oh, here it is on the I think it must be on our agenda somewhere, maybe not. Meeting location change. It shows February 24th and March and excuse me, March, excuse me, March 24th and March 31st. Those are not meetings, are they?
Our county board meetings, we correct, we are not going to be holding county board meetings on the 24th and 31st. The next county board meeting will be April 7.
Okay, and that's going to be in 702.
It's we we that's a good reminder. This chamber shuts down after this week to remodel the AV, and it's going to be closed for six weeks.
Okay.
And so what meetings are held by the county board or the city council are going to be up in Room 702, a much tighter setting, not good timing for moving public meetings into a smaller room.
Or telephonically.
Or telephonically. I mean, the the new news just coming out within the last day that perhaps we can participate telephonically, that that may help us in in that direction. Okay, the committee meeting that was scheduled for 1:00 this afternoon has been canceled. Much of life has been canceled. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion. All those in favor of adjourned can signify by leaving. Those opposed can stay. Thank you all for a nice meeting.
Thanks.
Good luck with the plague.